Shall we, uh...shall we call this meeting to order? It's 5:31 on Tuesday, January 28th. Madam Clerk, could you call, uh, give a roll call?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Gene Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Garcia, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and reflection tonight?
It'd be an honor. If you're able, please stand and join me in the pledge. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tomorrow is the beginning of the Lunar New Year. Does that make this the Lunar New Year's Eve? Is that a, that's a thing?
Yes.
Okay. But, um, you know, in light of the tragedy of the Eden fire, it's, it's difficult to say Happy New Year, right? But after doing some research on the significance, the intentionality and symbolism of the Lunar New Year, I felt more comfortable saying Happy New Year. When I think of the Lunar New Year, I think of a celebration with lighting red lanterns and fireworks and red envelopes. But I want to focus on the theme of how we find inspiration and strength to embrace new beginnings, especially in the shadow of a tragedy. Tomorrow, Sierra Madre Elementary School and Sierra Madre Middle School will reopen, followed by Pasadena High School, John Muir High School, Marshall Fundamental School, and many of the Altadena and Pasadena schools on Thursday. Let our thoughts be with the staff and students as they return to their school communities. And remember that the three communities of Sierra Madre, Pasadena, and Altadena are all bound in community throughout public school district. Many of the students only return to school for two days after our Western calendar New Year and their holiday break. My hope is that the students return to school, that they'll have an experience, or the ones that have experienced loss can find solace within their community. Following tragedy, we're often felt lost and overwhelmed. This collective tragedy shook our foothill community and left many of us wondering how to move forward. The beauty of the Lunar New Year is its message of resilience. It reminds us that even after the darkest winter, spring will come. Just as the moon waxes and wanes, so does the joy and sorrow we experience in life. While we can't undo the pain that so many in our foothill community have had to endure over the past three weeks, I am optimistic that this can be a time where we can plant the seeds of hope and growth. Let this be a chance where we can recommit ourselves to community, service to others, mending relationships, spreading kindness, and finding gratitude in even the smallest of blessings. Let us lean on each other and recognize that one of our greatest sources of strength comes from community, as seen by the tremendous showing of volunteerism and generosity by our residents. They, they showed and continue to exhibit today and going forward. So here's to the Lunar New Year, where we are reminded that there is a light that comes after darkness, a celebration of resilience, a reminder of hope, and an invitation for renewal. Thank you, and may your New Year be filled with peace and joy.
Yeah. That was delightful, thank you. All right, so on to the next item on the agenda. We need a, um, an approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there is a, on the agenda, if I may, a request from the City Council to approve the minutes from the last meeting, and those minutes were not included in the agenda packet. City, city staff is requesting that the council continue that to the next meeting.
Great, okay. Any other changes? We received a number of questions and comments on the, on our financial statement, on the comprehensive financial report. I'm wondering if that's something that we want to handle as consent, or we want to pull it out as a discussion item. Why don't we go ahead?
I leave it to you, Mr. Mayor, because I, you know, it's your meeting, and I think we can discuss it during consent, but obviously, if you want to warrant more discussion.
Why don't we, why don't we, I'd like to propose that we move it as a discussion item and make it our first discussion item, if, if that is okay with, with council? If that's the case, then I will look for a motion for approving the agenda as amended.
I move to approve the agenda, striking the, um, the approval of the meeting minutes from January 21st, and moving Consent Item C to dis, to discussion.
Do I have a second?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, motion carries. All right, so now we'll look for an approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Does that move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right. All right, we'll skip the meeting minutes, as we said. Now we're on to mayor and city council reports. I know it's just been a week. Do we have any council reports from anybody? No from Mr. Goss, Councilmember Goss, Councilmember Krebs?
Um, yes, obviously there weren't any formal events in the last week since our meeting, but I will say that today, in light of the executive order that was announced last night, I did reach out to our local elected officials, Congresswoman Chu, Senators Padilla and Schiff, and State Assemblyman Harabedian about any concerns that we should have as a city for the federal funds that we know have been granted to us, both in connection with Congresswoman Chu's efforts for our public safety, as well as, obviously, the FEMA recovery that we're expecting from the Eden fire. I did hear back from both State Assemblyman Harabedian, as well as Congresswoman Chu's office. Both said that they understood the concern and were working on it, and obviously, subsequent to that, there was an injunction ordered by a court until the beginning of next week. So just wanted to let you know that I did reach out and express our concern and ask them to let us know what, you know, what their, what their plan was, and also whether we should be, you know, worried about the receipt of those funds.
Thank you so much. Any updates or reports?
Just a quick one, Mr. Mayor. So I, I attended, I guess what turned into a press conference, I wasn't really sure what it was going to be, with SoCal Gas and the YMCA. The CEO of SoCal Gas was there, as well as Mayor Gordo from Pasadena, the CEO of the Los Angeles Greater YMCA. And SoCal Gas gave, it wasn't a presentation, but it's my understanding, they gave a donation of $400,000 to the relief effort for the Y. And it kind of showcased our community and volunteers from our city, as well as, there was quite a few volunteers from SoCal Gas that day there, helping out as well. So it was, it was an honor to give accolades to our first responders, our staff, and as well as the volunteers and the YMCA, and give gratitude to SoCal Gas for the generous donation for, for the relief effort.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, I did attend an interesting webinar that was called Green Jobs for LA County, and it really did apply to the cleanup that's going to have to happen post this fire, and also how are we going to prepare for these types of incidents, and almost all disasters. And it was really interesting to see the changes in our economy and our workforce is going to be very, very different, as we can already see now, how many people we'll have to hire to complete these types of cleanup jobs with ion lithium batteries. And as we talked about clean battery power during the response to our emergency, and, and how fire behavior is changing so dramatically, and this fire was definitely an example of that, and how we're going to prepare for that, and all the way from landscape changes to cleanup, to all types of disasters. So it was really interesting to see, like, what we're looking at in our future and the different types of jobs that we never imagined we'd have to, you know, man, or give to the labor market, staff, in the future. Thanks. The other thing that I attended, kind of for our town, which was, it's always bittersweet when you go to a memorial, but I went to Eddie Newman's, I mean, Eddie Truman's memorial from up in the canyon, and he was such a beloved citizen of our town. And it was really neat to see some of their old citizens who all lived up in the canyon and all lived there, and we all grew up behind the dam, climbing back there, hiking, swinging from ropes and swimming, and, and hearing about the debris cleanup this week has been interesting, and seeing, you know, some photos of how the burn came down was kind of nostalgic, but listening to the memories of the past fires and seeing what we experienced now was kind of a nice time to build community again with people, especially at an event that was bittersweet and sad, but it was kind of nice. And the last thing was that I did speak to Assemblyperson Harabedian about a subject that came up with a few of our schools in Pasadena, Sierra Madre, and Altadena, was the, the public schools have all applied for their FEMA funds already, and they've started their, their relief efforts. But 40% of our population, students, go to private schools, and what relief is there for our private schools? So he's looking into that right now as well, because they can't really apply for the same funding as, as they're not a public school. So they're not an individual, they're not really a small business, so do they apply under small business? So those kinds of conversations came up, and he'll get back to us on that.
Great, thank you so much. I have a couple of quick ones. So on January 23rd, last Thursday, the governor came and was at, God, I can't remember which elementary school in, in Pasadena, but at that, at that meeting, we had the speaker and the Speaker of the Assembly, Speaker of the Senate, and, and the governor signed two bills for a total of $2.5 billion, one billion going towards the LA fire relief and, 1.5 for LA fire relief and a billion for state climate change response. So I think that was really, everybody's moving quickly to get funds to, to support our communities, and we're very thankful for that. The other, switching from there, two announcements from the city. The first is, is that you're going to be getting two water bills coming up. The first water bill will be from December 29th through January 7th. There'll be a second water bill starting on January 25th through the end of February. No residents of Sierra Madre are going to be billed for their water for the duration of the emergency from January 8th through January 24th. And that was a, an initiative by staff, looking out for the residents and anyone that was impacted. In addition, for those, those homeowners who lost their homes, they will not be getting any water bills until everything is, is back and rebuilt. So I wanted to share that on behalf of, of staff. And then the, there's going to be a meeting for the Fire Safe Council, so we're getting that off the ground. It's going to be next Monday, February 3rd, 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers. Fire Safe Council is, is one of those initiatives that's going to help us, one, reduce the, the risk of fires on people's homes, and, two, build resilience within, the people within the council, and three, it'll help a lot with insurance rates. There's a likelihood, there's a higher likelihood that we may be able to get insurance for many of those people in those areas if we have Fire Safe Councils. No guarantees, but it's going to be something that's going to help protect our homes and protect people's finances, so. That's all for city updates. Oh, and then we've got, actually, there is one more. So I've got a, a note here. Nicole Tibbet, she's the Assistant City Manager for, of San Marino and Director of Programming for the Municipal Management Association of Southern California. And she recently attended a meeting in Tampa with nearly 60 city and county managers from across the United States. While planning for upcoming conference, many of the participants there expressed their shock and heartfelt concern for the challenges California is facing due to the recent fire. In a gesture of support, city and county managers from across the nation wrote heartfelt letters to the city of Sierra Madre. These letters are meant to comfort, connect, and encourage the community during this difficult time. There's a couple of here that I'd like to, to read from. We have about seven or eight, but I'm going to pick a handful as we go through. First one's from Kansas City. Kansas City is thinking of Los Angeles, wishing you strength and health as you continue enduring this horrific disaster in your community. Thank you for your bravery and dedication. Your work is incredibly important and appreciated. Your courage and sacrifice do not go unnoticed. You are heroes. That's Leslie Herring, the city manager in, in Kansas. The next one we have is from Kyle Law, City Manager of West Point, Utah. I'm so sorry for what you are going through. Please know you are all in my thoughts and prayers. I know that many other city administrators and officials in Utah are also praying for you. We have one from, from Oregon. To the incredible city staff impacted by the wildfires, please know that your dedication to your community does not go unnoticed, especially in such trying times. As you face those challenges, we stand with you and are committed to supporting you in any way we can. Love, resistance, courage, and steadfast commitment is a beacon of hope during this difficult time. Please take care of yourself, and we are thinking of you. And then one from Belgrade, Montana, from one public servant in Montana. Thank you. You are supported, and we wish you all well as you struggle through, with the challenges of today. So some very nice comments from across the country, from our fellow city administrators and staff. That's very kind. Thank you for sharing that. All right, we now will move on to the, the public comment section of the meeting for items not on the agenda. And prior to doing so, we have the Public Participation Code of Conduct. So our code of conduct states that your participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. The council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt, disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designee to cease the disruption, may be precluded from future participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought to the, into council chambers or other meeting place if doing so would disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly discourse of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, sir, we have, at this time, five speaker cards. The first of the five is from Joseph Kane.
My, my name is Joseph Kane. I live at 2081 Liliano Drive. I am here with a complaint about overgrown vegetation in the small valley on the west side of Liliano Drive and on the north end of Stonehouse Road. The recent fire reached the backyard of a house at the top of Liliano Drive before being stopped. The fire started down the little, little valley on our west side, but was stopped before as, any residential damage occurred. I realize that I live in a wilderness urban interface, and some wildfire risk is to be assumed. However, the poor maintenance of this valley increases the risk substantially and unnecessarily. The little valley has a large amount of cut wood, piles of leaf and cut brush, and a large amount of uncut brush and leaf litter. There are numerous eucalyptus trees that are overgrown and in need of thinning, topping, and some removal. The owners of this property have provided minimal maintenance for many years. The fuel load has increased significantly in the past several years due to increased winter rain, and it has reached a dangerous level, in my opinion. The neighborhood is lucky no homes were lost with this fire. The fire came really close. It is our hope that with increased attention to the potential for wildfire danger in our neighborhood, we can minimize as many fire variables as possible. I and my neighbors are requesting your assistance and surjections on how to address this obvious wildfire hazard in our neighborhood and the community in general.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Chris Bowler.
Hello, my name is Chris Bowler. I live at 691 Chaparral Road in Sierra Madre. I've been a local builder for 30 years in town here, and I've been dealing with the building departments, architects, and engineers for longer than 30 years. It's kind of a quagmire, it takes a long time to get through this process. I have come up with an idea, if you guys could bear with me. There's, in the building departments all over California, we have thousands of approved homes that have already gone through for Fire Zone 4, that we could put together a package of 100 different homes for these people on Altadena, Sierra Madre, and Pasadena to pick from, different square footages, different designs, that we could, people could go online and they could pick from this house, and they could have, you know, you're cutting through so much red tape. The architect fees are ridiculous. Building Department, I mean, I don't see how it's going to get any easier. People say they're going to cut red tape, but I don't know how you're going to, you know, in these building departments. If we come up with this plan of 100 homes that people could pick from, we could virtually start as soon as the hazmat cleanup is done. I mean, I know architects own the rights to their drawings, but I'm sure there's a plenty, plenty of good-hearted architects that would be willing to give up their rendering for maybe a small fee of a couple thousand dollars. And if their house got built 35 times, they're doing all right with that one design. I, I just really think that this is important. I, the building process, my neighbor, which I'm working on his house right now, did an addition, and not that big of an addition. It took him nearly a year to get through the design process, and it took another seven months to get through the building department, to, to start. And I can't see how it's going to be any better in the future with what's going on. They're going to have so many people, and there's going to be all these architects that are going to just accept whatever work comes their way, and they're going to have 50 clients on their desk, and they're not going to be able to provide service to any of them. And they're just going to push people off, and this building process could take five, six years to bring this LA back. And I don't know, I just think this is a really good idea. You know, I would really like to get in touch with Catherine Berger, if anybody has her information, and I could discuss it a little further. I would really appreciate that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is John Casara.
Yeah, good evening. My name is John Casara. I live at 2085 Kaia Lane. I'm at the very top of Sierra Madre. Behind me is the, and adjacent to me is the Lanin Debris Basin. And I know the fire was bad, and I'm very sorry for the people that did lose their homes, but a few of us stuck it out. We had three-inch hose, 150 feet, we hooked it up to the hydrant, and we fought the fire. It burned all the way down to the driveway of the Lanin Debris Basin, all across it, which is more than I can say for a lot of the area up and down the Sierra Madre slope. I'm not here to question or say anything bad. Of course, we didn't, I understand the fire department was busy, but we didn't see a single fireman or a single truck for two days. LA County Fire showed up with a hot crew. The hot crew showed up, but we had defensible space already of over 150 feet. Both my neighbor John and myself, we've cleared all the brush out. And that evening before, we hooked up to the hydrant. We shot from 11 o'clock at night until 7 o'clock the next morning, water coming out of the hydrant, watered four houses and all the other shrubbery that was there. When the fire came, it breached at over 50 feet above the olive trees, and it was quite the fire. The biggest thing is, though, we did save the property. We didn't evacuate, we saved the property. But mud mitigation right now is our biggest concern. I came to the city asking to find out about K-rail, to protect, because the valley behind, straight behind my house and John Fulmeyer's house is straight down, it's all burnt. That area has not burnt since 1971, and that's a fact. So in, incurring the Public Works, I talked to them, and they said, yeah, we're trying to move some K-rail around. Ostensibly speaking, two officers came from the LA County Sheriff's Office to my home at 8 o'clock Sunday night, and they wanted to do a walk-around on, on our lot, and they were asking how come I didn't have K-rail? And they're going to put it through Altadena Sheriff's Substation plus Temple City Substation as, and remarked to City of Sierra Madre, how come we can't have K-rail up there? We fought the fire, there, like the gentleman said, no house burned in Liliano, or Arno, or on the other side. But if you happen to come up there and take a look, you will see that everything burnt right to our houses, right to them. And we were able to save the houses. So I really do think the fact that, you know, I'm sorry we didn't have any help, but we managed. I think it is upon this committee and the people of Public Works to supply us with at least enough K-rail, which I only need four big pieces, and John could use some along his side, and the mud mitigation would be fine. There was a palm tree that was about 40 feet high that burned at the top. The circumference was somewhere about three feet, and we talked, they were cutting it down, and they cut it in sections so that we could use that. I barricaded my property as best I could with that stuff, but I still need K-rail.
Mr. Casara?
And I know that LA County said that they provided Sierra Madre with the K-rail they had, because they've been up to my house five or six times. So that's all I need, is a place and a time and a date to find out if you gentlemen and ladies are going to be able to get Public Works to provide the K-rail we need to save the houses that we saved from the fire.
May I ask them a quick question?
Go ahead, yes.
Mr. Casara, can I ask you a question? So one of the struggles that we always have is how do we reach all of our citizens, right, with the information? So we've, we've put out some information on social media, on Nixle. Is there a way that we can get you information? Because we do have a program for that, and we had, was it LA County, or is it LA County that, that you would call a number, and within 48 hours, they would call you back, come to your home, and help you mitigate a plan, which then they would revert to us, and then our Public Works would assist with that? How do we best communicate to our public?
Well, to tell you the truth, we've had six to eight people from LA County there for three nights straight, telling us how they could, they couldn't really help us.
But how can we, how can we send you, like, how, would, regular mail, obviously, is too slow. We have a Nixle program that sends out messages to your cell via email.
I just want to know if you can provide the K-rail or not.
Yep.
That's what I need to know.
Okay.
So I, I think we can have the Public Works reach out and, and find out what they can do.
Like I said, we saved every house in the Liliano tract, and it all burned right to every house. It wasn't like half of Sierra Madre where it was still a half a mile away. Now, you've provided K-rail to some of the houses up on One Carter, but the problem is, they're, they're still, the mud is still good half a mile away yet. This is right coming down our property, the valley is steep, the LA County sheriffs who showed up asked me, how come the city- The LA County sheriffs who showed up asked me, how come the City of Sierra Madre has not been up here and has not looked at this as dire need? Because that valley is straight up. It's not bent. It's not anything, and it's burnt.
We'll definitely have someone reach out to you.
I would appreciate that, sir.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time and trouble. My number is (626) 862-1207. And I'm supposed to contact the Altadena Sheriff's Substation and the Temple City Substation because they're putting out together a mandate about doing something for our houses up there.
Okay.
So, you should be hearing from them very shortly because they were not, they're wondering how come this is not happening. So, I do want to thank you for whatever effort you can, but after fighting the fire and not losing a house, I don't want to lose it to mud. Thank you.
We understand. Thank you. Ma'am, who do we have next?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker card is from John Fulenwider.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, fellow residents. First of all, thanks for everything that did go well in the city. My neighbor, John Casera, is, you know, God bless him and stuff like, he did do a great job in saving both, not only his house, but my house because I evacuated with my, with my daughter and her, my grandkids. I guess I'm here to say, this is the first incident in twenty-five years that I didn't, that I truly felt I had no support from the city. I contacted Public Works several times and asked for support, and I was assured somebody was going to be getting back to me within your twenty-four or forty-eight hours. I did not receive a call. Serpentishly, I started getting contacts from Public, from the LA County Public Works Department, and they were saying that they are working with the City of Sierra Madre, and that they had basically brought K-rails, some number of K-rails out, they issued into the city, and it was the city's discretion as to how they were to be applied. Again, nobody from the city ever reached out to us, and we clearly had some major issues up there. I remember, you know, and maybe some of you do, it wasn't that many years ago that we had the mud's debris flow out of Chantry Flats that came down, went all the way down to Elkins, about three feet deep, filled up the debris basin in the back, and that is directly behind my house. That's the type of thing that we're trying to mitigate against. I mean, we have every opportunity to deal with this, and I'd like not to find ourselves in a situation where we talk about it, but nothing happens and then we have an incident. Councilman Lowe, you asked the question, how do we improve communication? You know, you can always improve communications. The key thing that I would like to say, I'm assuming there's going to be some kind of post-event analysis of the fire, and what worked, what didn't work, what could have been done better, did all the agencies work in a, in a comprehensive manner? I think that's the next thing to do, and it should be done rather soon before the critical information that we all shared and participated in is lost. But I would not, I'd like it not to be just a city-focused activity. In many cases, the public needs to be involved with that. I can contribute to that and improve that. I think, you know, when you talk about improving communications, there's lots of ways to look at improving communications, but I think we need to sit down collaboratively and talk about what's the best way to do it, what works, and what can we do so that the next time this happens, because there will be a next time, or can we do a better job? So, thank you very much.
But, sir?
Mr. Bowler.
Do you mind? But to that point, to Councilmember Lowe's point, how would we invite you to that meeting? If we were to have a meeting about the post-mortem and about improving communications, how best to get to you?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I don't mean specifically like your phone number, but I mean, in general, how would you best receive information, like, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to have a town hall about this? How would we reach you?
If I'm specifically going to be invited to participate, just send me a direct email.
Right. But if it was just statewide...
If not, I, you know, I read, my wife is probably much better at it than I am. I read the various other little blurbs that the sheriff sends out, you all send out, et cetera, and those are beneficial.
Okay.
But remember, you're trying to deal with, you know, eleven thousand people.
Yes, that's why I asked.
You know, Liliano is, let's say, two hundred people, and we've got unique problems that the other, you know, ten thousand, eight hundred people don't have. So, we, you know, we can't get lumped in, in this and forget that, you know, we also need to have some remediation activity in place to prevent this in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Katsmer Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, so city manager could speak to, kind of, this is a, actually a Los Angeles County Public Works. It's kind of their job to do that, to do the assessment rather than the city, the way, the way this, this response all works. So, if the city manager or maybe our director of Public Works can kind of explain if that'd be okay, Mr. Mayor, kind of the process to put some of their minds at ease?
Absolutely. Let me just ask, we've got, do we have one more public comment, right?
There is, with city staff.
It is for city staff? Okay. Great. So, yes, so then let's do that. I just would, if there was another one related to this, but please, let's go ahead, and city manager will write to your discretion of you or Public Works, whoever.
I think I can, I can take it, and if the Public Works Director Inez wants to add something, I'm certainly, he can invite him up. So, the county did establish the mud hotline, and initially, they had informed us that if a resident calls and leaves their address within forty-eight hours, they would get back to the resident. They would set up an appointment to, to visit the site and do a mud flow mitigation plan specific to that property. Forty-eight hours passed, I heard that some residents weren't getting a call back, so I contacted the county, and they said that they were overwhelmed. They said if the resident left their number on the hotline, that somebody was going to go out, they just didn't have the resources to call the residents back. So, the county is responsible for going out and doing the assessment of the properties and, and providing the residents with a mud flow mitigation plan. Then it's up to the residents to implement that plan. The city is strategically placing K-rails based on, on past experience with mud flow and with maps that have been provided by LA County on where we can anticipate mud flow. And those K-rails have been strategically deployed without, throughout the city to prevent mud that enters the city from entering people's garages, really to channel that mud in the streets into the gutters. The city's responsibility is not to protect the homeowner's property, that's the homeowner's responsibility, and the county is taking the lead on providing with the residents on mud flow mitigation plans.
Great.
And I'll just echo that. We have, we have a former employee of over thirty years that has experienced mud flow, but to the point in your neighborhood, that area hasn't burned in over fifty years. So, that's, that's a point well taken.
So, I can add to that. So, we do have former Public Works Director that, almost thirty-eight years of institutional knowledge on mud flows.
For our city.
For our city. And he is also working with Woldan Engineers, under contract with Woldan Engineers, and has the engineering backing of Woldan. And what they're doing is taking a former Director Semino's institutional knowledge, the maps that the county has provided, looking at both of them, and then coming up with the best, the recommendations for where to best place those.
And we can have them take an extra look at Liliano, I mean, I think that's what we're hearing tonight.
And actually, on Sunday, Public Works Director Inez, former Public Works Director Semino, and I were at that site, and we did inspect that debris basin, and we did talk about some, some proactive measures to, to direct mud flow. So, that site was inspected on Sunday, and we did see that some debris was taken up onto the access trail, onto the access road that leads into that debris basin. So, we were there on Friday, right after the rainfall.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this exercise is helpful.
No, and thank you for suggesting it. I agree. Ma'am, who do we have next?
Thank you. Our last speaker card is from...
Are we done?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. From City Librarian Regan.
Hello, Mayor Parkhurst, Mayor Protem Lowe, and our Honorable City Council. I am here as your friendly neighborhood city librarian, Leila Regan, to talk to you about One Book One City. Change of topics. We are bringing back our programming slowly but surely with respects to everything that has happened. We have subdued our One Book One City this year, just in light of the Eaton Fire and the air quality. So, we are still having it. The book is What You Are Looking For Is in the Library by Michiko Ayama. So, it's a wonderful book. I hope you will join us in reading it this month, and we have some fun programs all month long. You can stop into the library and make origami cats, if you're in the mood. We do have an open submission call right now. If anyone would like to write a one-thousand-word or less creative nonfiction or poem, we are going to publish a community book and have a book signing and reading of that book, and the submissions are open until next month, or this Monday, February third, at eight o'clock PM. So, you can submit online, or you can call the library if you need some help with submitting your piece, but we would love to have a nice community book on how the library has impacted you in a large or small way. And on, we are creating a new program at, and it will be held at RT Rogers. We are going to have the Sip and Shush Silent Book Club. If you don't know what a silent book club is, it is an opportunity to come to RT Rogers and sit quietly with other peers and take some time to actually read your book. Sometimes we don't make time to read our books, so you're welcome to sit there, read a book with or without lubrication, and, and you can then, at the end, after a solid hour of reading, you can discuss the book you're reading with everyone else there, or you can choose to go home. So, it's a low-stress, social interaction where you actually get to read your book. And that'll be at RT Rogers Saturday, February eighth at 6:30 PM, and Wednesday, February twenty-sixth at seven o'clock PM. And we also have our, we are bringing back Craft It for this month. We haven't done Craft It since we moved to our temporary library. So, we have Rich Proctor, who some of you may know. His daughter is going to teach us all how to do some felting, because in the book, the librarian in the book just sits there and felts and then gives you this awesome little felted thing that relates to your story. So, we're going to do some felting this month, and we will hopefully, not fully confirm, but we're hoping to have the world's strongest librarian play at the Sierra Madre Playhouse. That would be Monday, February twenty-fourth at 7:30 PM. So, we hope you'll still engage with us this upcoming month in February for One Book One City. Thank you.
Do you just get on stage for that?
Oh, I wish.
World's strongest librarian.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Did we receive any public comments by email tonight?
No emails were received, Mr. Mayor, and there are no other speaker cards.
Great. So, then we will go ahead and move on to the next part of our agenda, and that's the Public Works Water Update. So, we do, Manager McGee.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Before I start, I just wanted to give you guys some rain total updates, if you'll indulge me. Saturday to Sunday, the yard received point-one-two inches of rain. The tunnel system received point-two-zero. Sunday into Monday, it received, the yard received point-six-three, and the tunnels received point-seven-seven. So, the yard got a three-quarters of an inch of rain, and we got almost a little less than an inch of rain at the tunnel system. Also, I would like to, at this point, just thank the community for their patience. Going through a no-water, no-boil situation is not something I had on my bucket list to do in this department. I take the distribution of your water system very seriously. I distribute that to my loved ones. I want to make that very clear, that I do have loved ones in this town, and so it's a very serious thing for me. I do want to thank my staff. Staff did an amazing job. They hit the ground running. I do want to thank City Manager Reynoso. He was very instrumental in helping me out with this situation, too. So, I'm very happy that we're done with it, and I'm very happy that we passed it, but a serious situation, and I wanted to know that your water department worked very hard for you, just passing along. So, we can go to now a little update on our water mainline replacement. I'm going to give you a little background. It should be just a brief one, and I'll invite any questions you may have along the way. If you want to ask questions at the end, if you do want to ask me any questions about anything that doesn't have to do with that, I will take any of those at this time, too. So, water main replacement, just a little background, the aging infrastructure. Pre-2015, our leak rate was fifty annually, so we were doing less than one leak a week, if you want to look at it in that retrospect. 2015, two-hundred-and-fifty leaks is a number I'll never forget, when we started pressing up to that. 2016 to the present, we're doing four-hundred leaks annually. That has not waived. I think we went down to about three-ninety-eight at one point, but we stayed pretty consistent with that number. What does that have to do with? That is your aging infrastructure. That is pipes that are ten, twenty, thirty years past their life expectancy. That is the primary reason. There's, we've come to that, you know, the caveat in the, in the, in the why. We're right there where everything's starting to fail at the same time. So, starting in 2015, we, the city began focused efforts on mainline replacement. We had done some in the late eighties, early nineties, and I do mean not just sections, actual streets that we've done in ductile iron, but 2015 saw the first time we started doing not just little sections here and there, replacements of, you know, a ten-foot, twenty-foot, thirty-foot section. We're talking streets. The first several years were just emergency-based. They were sections that were, we were identifying as a, as a problem, and we addressed them. In 2017, we created the Water Master Plan. This plan identified thirty-two sections of mainline in need of replacement, twenty-nine-thousand feet of pipe. What's our progress over this decade? And we are at a decade now. We've actually, I just told you, we identified twenty-nine-thousand feet of pipe. We've actually done thirty-five-thousand-plus. So, we are, we are above, above and beyond what we projected to do. How does this happen? We prioritize the areas by identifying with the master plan. We also use the city leak log. When an operator goes out and conducts a leak, it's not just dig a hole up, fix a leak, we're done, we're out. We don't think about it, right? They actually take a log on an Excel form, the address that the site was visited, the size of the pipe, the material, age of pipe, things like that. We two, we use those two things in conjunction when we go to do a mainline replacement program. We go, all right, the master plan has identified Santa Anita Avenue. Well, we look at that right there, and we go, is that really in conjunction with what we're doing on, what the field operators are doing? And if that matches up, that's your highest priority. But it also adds to the next step, which is additional mainline sections added due to expanding leak frequency. So, as I go to do a section, if I identify a section, San Gabriel Court, Santa Anita, Colony, Fane, we did that area at one point. And then, pre that project, we did the other side of Santa Anita, San Gabriel, and Sierra Place. Well, that left a section of Mountain Trail that had high leak frequency, so we add, common-sense elements, we add that section on. You don't want to tie into a pipeline where there's, right in the middle, there's a bad pipe. So, that's added to some of the frequency where you get your thirty-five-thousand feet additional on those. Your challenges, you run into them. Initially, we were doing five-to-six-thousand feet of pipe when we first began. There was kind of a, two reasons for this. The, the underlying reason was we were grouping these, these sections together. We were doing, like I just said, a Santa Anita, San Gabriel, Colony, Fane, those kind of things together. That's minimally why the, the issue is why we're doing less, but it's really, it's really just the cost of materials. We've seen cost of materials going up fifteen percent, construction costs going up as well, to where the current projects that we're doing are more like twenty-five-hundred feet of pipe in the last two projects we've done. We continue to see aging infrastructure, which continues to lead to increased leaks in the system, so we'll fix an area, but we're still expanding and seeing leaks further out in the system. And as that infrastructure continues to age, there's an increased need to expand on those areas. So, like I said, once again, to go to an area and say, hey, this maybe wasn't identified on the master plan, but it is now an area that we have to address. So, looking ahead the next couple of years, what we're, what we're seeing is we're going to continue to do the leak response. The, the number-one thing this city does better than any other city is, is respond to leaks. We're out there fast and efficient. We're going to continue to replace high-priority mainline, and we're going to continue to do that with an increased budget. We've been dealing with a budget of about one-point-two million dollars. We just had a water rates study that continued, we're going to be able to raise the budget in twenty-five, twenty-six to one-point-five million dollars. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're dealing with contractors and pipe and things like that and contingencies, it actually does allow you to do a little bit more sections, a little bit more pipe, a little bit maybe around a corner that you wanted it to do. So, it will, it will help us out. So, it will, it will help us out, and hopefully, we're reaching an area where, where materials and things like that will start to come down. We're gonna update our water master plan. In fact, we've already kind of started the process of this. We'll update the water master plan, which is gonna help us identify these areas. We've crossed out, out of the 32 sections that we identified in the first master plan, I think we've crossed out 26 sections. So, there's still some left, but we're gonna be able to better identify that, better understand our water system through that process. And then, we'll always look for additional funding. That's gonna come usually from grants, but in the times we're in right now, there might be some emergency money out there. We have spoken to certain Assembly members that are out there, and we'll continue to look at those things and see what comes around. But the summary for it, just to give you, we are doing significant mainline replacement, about 15 percent of the city. We go by, it's a 44-square-mile town, so 3,000, 35,000 feet of pipe. Challenges are there. Like I said, again, cost, expanding leaks. We do have the increased budget for the new water rates, and we are going to be conducting a updated water master plan. That's it. I'll take any questions that the council may have. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for the report. We just did that water rate study, was it last year? I think it was within the last year or two.
Yes.
And as I recall, we, when, in making a decision about water rates, we consciously decided to not go any higher than what, where we were advised by the consultant because of the cost of the water rates to our water consumer. So, my question is, are we, are we charging enough thereby getting enough revenue to do enough main replacement now that we have about a year to look back at that?
I will speak, I know, I'll speak a little bit, but I'll, I'll definitely defer to the city manager a little bit on this one. But, I will say that if you're asking me, "Am I able to do my job and effectively do enough mainline?", from my point of view, I would always like more. I mean, you are effectively doing one area now. Whereas, like I said before, I was able to do a section at a time where it involved maybe a, a big section, quadrants, you know, like a full streets plus another street plus, you know, it was getting me more for my, my dollar, if you want to go with that. But, yeah, more would be, if we could address more, that would be great. But, I'm able to prioritize what I need to do, what needs to be done, and get that done on a yearly basis.
Follow-up, please.
So, just a follow-up. Thank you for, for the response. Well, that makes sense. I, I wanted to ask you about the, the water rate that we used to have was quite a bit lower, right? Now, we've gone to a higher water rate, and we, we, last information our council got was that our total water loss is down. So, you're not telling us that the water loss is going up, are you?
So, no. So, the, the, the water loss audit that we conduct every single year is staying relatively the same every year now. As we, we saw it decrease from a 30 percent down to 20 percent, and we got as low as, I think, 11 point, I'm spitballing, 11.7, I believe.
So, the, the, we're still seeing about 400 leaks a year, even though we're replacing water main. So, that is just a function of how decrepit the rest of the water system is? Or, is there some kind of pressure issue because we're replacing water mains? Is that putting more pressure in the decrepit part of the system?
I truly believe anytime you, you, it's a living organism. I, I treat it like that. It's a living organism. As you move from one section to another, you now, as you hook into a pipeline that is older, yeah, you're, now you're depending on that line to, you know, to be structurally safe, you know, sound. And it's old. It's, it's, it's absolutely the age of the pipe. We're seeing 1930s, 1940s, 1950s pipe. It is, their steel pipe is 60-year rated. So, we're seeing, we're, we're far over it.
So, the water rate stays good for how long?
I will, I think it's five years.
Five years, five years. Okay.
May I, may I add a little bit?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, Councilmember Goss, thank you. Really good question. So, the water rates have several components that we look at. It has the, the meter connection fee, and that really keeps the lights on. That, we get that, every meter that's hooked up pays for the salaries. It pays to keep our operation going. And there's a commodity charge. So, for every unit of water, you pay for the treatment, for pumping the water, for distributing it to the system. Then, we have the infrastructure charge. And that's something new that came in the work that, that you did when you were on the, on the Water Subcommittee. And we put that infrastructure charge in so that we could generate a million dollars of revenue for mainline replacement per year. The reason we did 5,000 to 6,000 linear feet of pipe, we targeted a mile. A mile is 5,280 feet. And that, for a million dollars, back when we did the, the plan, you could buy about a mile of pipe. Now, we see that it's somewhere between 2,500 to 3,000 for a million dollars. So, we were able to up it a little bit, and so, so the infrastructure charge is now generating closer to 1.5. That's for water main replacements, for well rehabilitations, and for other things that they're working on. So, there's a couple of components. Every time that we do the water rate study, we look at what, how much capital work we're gonna do, what the, what it costs to keep the lights on, and what it costs to produce the water. And those components are what goes into the water rates. And that's why it's important to update them every five years. And actually, we look at them, after the, after the first year, in the second year, we'll start to look at our water rates again to make sure that they're in line. If, if we, if we see that we're charging too much, it's a potential that we can either lower the rates. They do have a CPI component built into it, so we can determine if we're gonna implement that CPI rate or not. So, we do, we do look at it, not necessarily the following year, but, but two years in, we'll look at it to prepare for every year after that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say the same thing, so go ahead.
My, my follow-up question with that is, so, when a person gets their bill, is there, is it the water rate, or is it built in there that the infrastructure rate fee, the main connection fees, are those separate, or are they embedded in that?
So, you have your connection fee, and then, depending on how much water you use, you get charged for tier one, which is the local groundwater that everybody gets their fair share of. And then, when, once you exceed that local-sourced water, now we have to import water to supplement that water. You're paying the tier two.
Got it.
And then, there's also the infrastructure charge.
Okay.
That, that pays for the water main replacements that we see every year.
Now, so, all of that money stays within the water department to pay for these repairs and, and everything to keep the lights on and keep the water department going? Does it go into the general fund and then get taken out as earmarked, or does it stay directly in there?
So, so the water department and the sewer department are considered enterprise funds? They're run like independent businesses? It's separate from the general fund? The funds between the water department, the sewer department, and the general fund do not co-mingle.
Thank you.
Okay.
Obviously, we all know that the cost of goods and, and services have risen, you know, significantly in the last 10 years. But, is it also the case that it's more expensive now for a mile, or we're, you know, we're reducing the amount that we can replace for a million dollars because we've gotten to more difficult replacements? I mean, I assume that the, the, the master plan, you know, identified sort of the low-hanging fruit, so to say, and then, now, like, for example, this latest one is in the canyon. I suspect that one is expensive, not only because of materials, but because of the nature of that location.
That is a great question, Councilmember, and you're absolutely correct. As you, as you indulge yourself into a, a harder section, the woodland section that we're about to address calls for a high line. So, not all, not all places call for a high line, where you're, you're, you're digging in place. You're putting a mainline down where the old mainline is. So, in order to keep the water on, as the, the city manager said, we have to have a high line. So, a line that they'll put in pre-construction for the mainline. It'll run independently, it'll run, it'll provide the, the citizens' water, but that's extra cost we're providing. But we otherwise wouldn't be able to dig there and do the project there. There's just no space. So, something like that happens, the tight proximity in that areas can't happen, but it really is, you just look at the line item for the price of pipe, it is expensive.
And, and for example, typical contractor in flatland, they'll, they'll install 400 to 500 linear feet per day, relatively with no problem. In the canyon, I think the last project we did, some days was 15 feet?
15 feet.
Yeah, per day. So, basically, one stick of pipe per day. So, that's gonna drive up costs.
One time, it took three weeks. I mean, it was just an adjustment of that. It was, it's, it's, it's a different, it's a riverbed. We're, we're, we're dealing with different ground structures here in this town, and that is a riverbed. But yes, that's a great question, and you're absolutely correct, but it is, it's the cost of things, too.
Thank you.
So, you said we've replaced 35,000 feet worth of, of pipe. How many feet of pipe do we have in the city total?
It's a 44-mile town, 45 miles, 44 miles a pound. So, I think I did the math the other day, it's 230, 230,000.
230,000. So, so we're...
That's not including, like I said, you gotta do laterals and things like that when you do hydrants and stuff like that. So, I'm, I'm spitballing the mileage of pipe in this town, kind of thing like that. So, yeah, but you're talking 250, let's be to say.
Okay. So, so, let, let, let's be conservative. We've, we've done about 10 percent, maybe a little bit more in 10 percent. If we do 35,000, I'll call it 350, just to make it an easy. We've, we've done about 10 percent of, of the pipes in town. So, we still, this is a long-term project that we've got.
I believe that we initially thought, maybe at the very beginning, that it wasn't, but when we started seeing the infrastructure, how it kind of, you know, that's why the city manager, at the time when he was the utilities director, created the, the master plan, the 2017 master plan, was to address, hey, what, what's a plan? We need, we need a plan to see what's, what's out there. We got a plan, and we addressed that plan, and we went, we went above it. It was more pipe than we thought it was, you know, we were able to get more pipe out there. I do think this is gonna continue to go. I think we're gonna, we're gonna be seeing these projects. We'll do a five-year, we'll do a five-year. But I do really believe we're, we're going to step over that, that ledge one day, and we'll see the decline in the, in the leaks. We have a running joke in the water department that every year, we're gonna, we're gonna see that, since 2016, we're gonna see that day where it comes down and there's, there's 100 less leaks. And it's coming, we just gotta keep replacing pipe.
Well, but while you've had the same number of leaks, our loss rate has, has gone down. We went down, we went from like a, what, a 25, 30 percent down to, you said, just about 12 percent. So, we've cut the leak rate at least in half, if not better.
So, I'll, like I said, once again, I'll defer to my staff. This is where I get to gloat about them. You, I, I don't live in this city anymore. I live in a different city, and I won't speak to it, but they don't address leaks as fast as we do. So, where you'll see water running down the street for days on end on certain places, that just doesn't happen here. Doesn't happen here. So, we, we attack it as fast as we possibly can. That's through communication through the public. The public lets us know. We have an on-call guy. I really do believe that a lot of it is us addressing that. And then, and then the big thing is, we are replacing the made, the high-priority ones, the ones where we're going and doing 40 a year, things like that.
Mayor, if I may add, we also took on, I think it was maybe around 2015, we took on a, a significant project in replacing all of our aging water meters. And water meters, lifespan, depending on water quality, and depending on how much sediment in your water, can wear the meters, and what happens after 12 to 15 years, the meter loses a capacity to, to really capture the low and the midflows. So, you lose a lot of water in what we call unaccounted-for water loss through meters, through water leaks, through even the fire department doing training. But when we replaced all of our water meters, and we put in basically new meters that were capturing essentially 100 percent of the water that flows through them, that's where we saw also a big drop in unaccounted-for water loss. So, it, there's, there's multiple components. We've also installed AMI, so our ability to track and read every meter has improved. So, so we tightened up every place that we, that we possibly could, and we saw the result of that water loss going down.
Thank you for that. I, I'll just, I'll throw it to you in just a second. I'll just say, when I was evacuated from the town, I actually was, it was somewhere else, and I actually saw the rare sight of a water meter reader out there. And I was, and this was a city that was built in the 80s, and not like us. So, I applaud the leadership of, of the department and, and yourself in, in getting that AMI system up and going. Councilmember Goss.
So, slightly different spin on this. We weren't doing much of anything before 2015. Neither had councils and the governor, government going back for decades. This problem accumulated over about a half a century. And so, I happened to be on the council that started it, and this council has continued it. And yes, it's an uphill battle because of deferred maintenance and irresponsible governance. We're a responsible government now. We don't have enough money to pay for 250,000 square feet, or, or linear feet of water maintenance, but we're doing the best we can. And that water rate study, I might add, we took into account our customer sensitivity to costs of their water. If we could have raised the water rates higher, and we could have, we could be putting more linear feet in the ground and reducing water loss and reducing leaks, these are the trade-offs that our water department has to do. And they're doing it, I think, as, as well as it can be done, in my, in my opinion.
Yes, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to age you on your council. The council hasn't been instrumental in the last decade on making sure we have the, the money in order to do the project, yes.
Actually, relatedly, I'll phrase it in the, in the form of a question, but it's, it's more commentary, given some of the feedback we've gotten over the last few weeks about our Public Works Department. Can you explain to the council and the public how many staff members were on, in the Public Works Department in 2015 when you had the 250 leaks versus how many you have today addressing 400 leaks?
Oh, that's a great question. I, I was one of those. So, we always have four operator, four, four pump operators. Pump, pump operators are, always come in fours because they do a rotating cycle on who covers the water on a 24-hour basis. I usually have six. I believe at the time, it fluctuated between five and six there. I think we have seven, but we use the Public Works in conjunction with the, you know, sorry, we use the Utilities Department in conjunction with the Public Works. So, everybody cross-trains. You have a staff here now where a maintenance worker knows how to go out and at least do mainline repairs. So, I'd like to say it was six then, and it's 14 now because of the cross-training. We do use everybody. Same thing in conjunction when we did the, the mudslides, and you have a staff here. That's how lucky this town is, to have a staff where they're willing to cross-train and to do a lot of things like this where they can be a water operator. I don't, you know, we have the licensed ones, but guys who can go out and do the helpful work, the, the grunt work. And we have guys who can cross-train all the things. So, yeah, I mean, it hasn't changed that much in the actual utilities, four, five. Now, we have seven. But, yeah, the same amount of guys are doing the same amount of leaks. They're just, for lack of a better word, they're beasts.
I was gonna ask a quick question. When I was up doing the water tour, it's a really different perspective when you're just playing up there, in the reservoirs, like, running around versus you're learning all about what all these things are that, that you see and what each different step is. And the one thing that really stood out to me that I stared at for a while was the map of what, what you guys have worked on already, and the, and the main lines that have been repaired, and, and the dates of everything. And, and I think that would be so useful, too, for the public to see, because it's easy for us to say each year, this is what we've done, and each year, this is, but when you visually see, oh, that's my street, oh, this is my neighbor's street, that's my grandma's street. And being able to see that, like, the planning department has the, what construction jobs are on, what plans have been approved. But even if we just had a map showing what we've already done, and like, a small date or something, I think it'd be really important for people to be able to see what we've done and what you guys have all done, and thank you.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem. We can, we can look into that, absolutely, yes. I have seven maps. Very visual.
Any other questions or comments?
I think most of my questions got asked by my colleagues here. Just, just one question. So we talked about the material being steel previously, not having useful life of, what, fifty to sixty years, if you're lucky?
Around sixty, yeah. I mean, there's, there's different materials. There's wrapped steel, there's, you see, there's cement coated, there's things like that where they'll, you know, they, around sixty, yeah.
And the, the material that we're using today, what's the useful life or expected life expectancy, life expectancy of that material?
We'll either range between the, the C nine hundred pipe or the C nine oh nine pipe, which is the high-grade PVC pipe, or we'll do if, if it calls for an area that we have to go through where maybe it's a little more challenging, maybe we still use the ductile iron pipe. Ductile iron, I believe, is ninety years. And the, the new C nine, the C nine hundred pipe, I believe they rated it at, I'm gonna fumble on this, I believe it was, it was somewhat clear as a hundred years, almost like that, so.
So our great-great-grandchildren will be thanking us for living here.
The goal, sir, the goal, sir, is that I never have to see those sections again, yes.
That's encouraging. So, and sometimes we have to line the pipe, right? Because of, it's underground or it's, it makes, or under a house perhaps? How long does that last?
So that's a great question. The reason for lining is, is, is fundamental different places. We might be a hillside where we've, we've done a hillside area where it's almost impossible to get a crew in there. So lining the project would be considered, not an easier, I don't wanna say easier, but it's a more, you know, fundamental way of getting the pipe redone and in a, in a faster but more, but efficient way. I would actually have to look into that. I believe, I believe it's rated somewhere in that same realm. It's a cast material that goes in there, so it's pretty, it's pretty good, but I, it's a little less, but I'd have to look in, I can get you that information.
Thank you. Thanks for the, the report and the
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you so much.
Let me just add that this report was at the request of councilmember Krebs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. I think we're onto the consent agenda. So, Madam Clerk, could you read the consent items by title only, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. The city council is being asked to consider four items on the consent calendar. Consent item A is a consideration of resolution twenty-five dash eleven, eleven approving certain demands. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash eleven. Consent item B is the grant of easement to Southern California Edison to construct new anchors at tract two, four, five, six, assessor parcel number five, seven, six, four, dash, zero, two, five, dash, nine, zero, two, a city-owned property located at five thirty, Alta Vista Drive in Sierra Madre, California. It is staff's recommendation that the city council grant an easement to Southern California Edison for this parcel. Consent item C was moved to discussion and so we'll move on to consent item D, that is the second reading of ordinance one, four, seven, six, adopting an administrative remedies procedure for challenges to fees, charges and assessments. And it is the recommendation of city staff that the city council conduct a second reading of ordinance fourteen seventy-six by title only, waiving any further reading and adopt ordinance fourteen seventy-six. And lastly, consent item E is the state homeland security program, sub-recipient agreement for grant year two, twenty twenty-three. It is recommended that the city council approve the grant agreement. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, do we have any questions on consent item A? B? D? E? Hearing no questions, we will now open this item up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards for public comment on, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, no cards were submitted from the public.
Great. So then we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Any discussions on the items?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. All right, so now, our next item is public hearing and this is a consideration of resolution, actually, Madam Clerk, you get to read that.
Happy to do that. And, Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is a public hearing to consider resolution twenty-five dash ten, approving a city parking bail schedule to establish operational costs associated with parking enforcement, instituting late payment penalty fines for delinquent parking, payment of parking citations, and authorize finance director to make any, any necessary budgetary and accounting entries. Mr. Mayor, I do believe Captain Amos will be presenting this report to the council this evening.
Captain Amos? It's all yours.
Yes. City Mayor, City Council, I will be presenting the resolution for parking penalties and fines. Can you hear me now? Better, okay, cool. Again, I, I can even now be presenting the PowerPoint presentation on our parking resolutions and fines. The purpose is to implement resolution twenty-five ten, establishing a structured fee and penalty system for our parking violations in the city of Sierra Madre. This resolution will make us compliant with vehicle section four, zero, four, zero, two, oh, three point five A. It will authorize the recovery administrative, administrative civil fines related to parking violations and required portion. A portion of the fees will be remitted, will go to the L.A. County Superior Court and state funds. The resolution establishes standardized parking fee, fee and penalties in compliance with the vehicle section, ensures cost recovery for parking enforcement operations and increases compliance through a structured penalty and late, and late fines. We have established a three-level fine and penalty system. The first one is within twenty-one days. So upon being issued the initial site, parking citation, the individual has twenty-one days to pay the fine. If it's in excess of twenty-one days, then there will be a twenty-five dollar assessment added to the original fee. And if not paid within a certain timeframe and the citation is forwarded to the DMV for a DMV hold, there is an additional fifteen dollar assessment fee there. When the citation is forwarded to the DMV, the individual will have to pay all parking fines that are forwarded to, to, to the DMV before they can register their vehicle at any point in time. Example of this would be overnight parking. We, staff has, has established, has established that the, that the fine amount would be one hundred dollars. If paid within twenty-one days, in excess of the twenty-one days would be one twenty-five and if sent to the DMV would be one forty. The difference would be for certain parking violations in relation to disabled parking spots, handicap ramps or, or issues of that nature. Typically, cities have a higher fine amount. The staff has determined that those, that those fines would be three hundred dollars. Not paid within twenty-five, within, within the twenty-one day period, it'd be three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then if it goes to DMV because it was not paid, it'll be three forty. And that is the summary of my presentation.
Thank you, Captain Amos. Questions?
Thank you, Captain Amos. Just a quick question. This was brought to us last year and it went back. Can you, can you explain that real fast?
Yes, so originally, staff was, staff was asked to look into our parking fees and fines. We had determined that, in, that we were not in compliance with the California Vehicle Section. So a ordinance was put together and the resolution was also included as part of that ordinance. The ordinance went through the first reading. At that point in time, staff was asked to reevaluate the amounts of the fines and come back to city council with the resolution. The ordinance went through the second reading and was approved. It's been over the thirty days since that ordinance was approved and now I'm here to present the resolution for the parking fines.
And the reason I ask, I know it's not discussion, but the reason I ask that question is because I know it's now a new year and we have a new mayor and we have the former mayor's name on the resolution. And I don't know if that's gonna cause an issue with signing, but I just wanted to bring it to attention. Because I know it was brought when we had a different mayor.
Yes, that was
Mayor Krebs was the mayor at the time.
Yeah, that was probably a oversight by me.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't even know if it was an oversight, but it, you know, I just wanted to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is before we approve this.
Maybe you can give her power to sign it.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a few questions. One, if an overnight parking is one hundred dollars, I also saw on the fee base that past seventy-two hours of parking is a hundred dollars. So would you give us sort of, like a citation, a hundred dollars every day for overnight parking or is it once that car's there? Do you see what I mean?
So, I, the overnight parking and the seventy-two hours are two different things. Overnight parking in the city requires a permit. So if a individual does not have a permit and our officers are out doing parking enforcement and they come across a vehicle one night, they can issue a citation. If second night, they are out and about and the person has not gotten either a temporary or annual permit, that person can be subject to a parking citation on the following day.
And how much is an overnight parking fee?
The permit, I believe, is about one ten, one, one, one fifteen, I, I
That's for the annual?
That's for the annual, yes. And then a night permit, a temporary permit, which is, which is for one night, I think it's about six or seven dollars.
So could the person use that violation and put it towards the annual fee?
At this time, that has not been discussed. In the past, that has not been, that has not occurred.
And my other question is, in comparison to other cities, how do our penalties rate, like San Marino, Arcadia, Monrovia, Pasadena, our surrounding cities?
So penalties were as low as about sixty dollars and as high as about a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen.
Thank you so much.
If I could follow up on that?
Okay.
So seventy-two hour, so let's say you do have an, an annual parking permit. Are you required to move your car every seventy-two hours? Is that the reason for that rule? So a car just doesn't sit on the street?
So per the California vehicle, you cannot leave a vehicle parked in a single location for more than seventy-two hours. There's a couple of reasons for that. One that comes to light for me is the city does street sweeping. So if you leave a car in a location for weeks, weeks on, 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 on the time, then you're not having the street sweep, swept up. Additionally, it just has the public move their vehicles so we, as law enforcement officers, can assure that vehicles are not being tampered with. So the, the parking permit does not exclude you from the seventy-two hours. The parking, the overnight parking permits are specifically for parking between certain hours of the evening. The seventy-two hour, the seventy-two hour parking restriction is, is, is basically across the board.
Thank you. And then regarding cost, you mentioned cost recovery for these, these, these fees or fines or bail, whatever we wanna call it.
Yes.
But we, we've done the analysis. I remember we had a, we had a consultant help us with our cost recovery. Do these, we can talk about other cities, but are we still even getting cost recovery given the current rate or the rate that's being proposed?
We are, we are receiving some cost recovery. True, true cost recovery to the citizens would be much higher, but the direction of the city council at, at the time was that there are some costs that are not gonna be fully burdened on the community. So we analyzed what, staff analyzed what we believe as reasonable and we believe this is a reasonable cost.
And if it's a hundred dollar fine, that doesn't mean the city, well, even with cost, let's not consider cost recovery, but just the amount that the city gets, as you said earlier, the city doesn't receive the whole one hundred dollars.
No, there are, there are about, in any parking citation that is issued, the court and the state receives about seven items from that fee alone. And then we contract with a company, so the company gets a portion of the, of the fee as well, so.
Okay. And as far as enforcement, well, you know, I won't, I won't ask that question.
Three questions. One, personal interest. So yes, I understand the seventy-two hours. I assume that parking citations happen, you know, at a certain time overnight. I mean, both my, our cars that we park in the street have, have a permit, but they have, they park in the same place all the time, even though they're moved quite frequently. Like I assume our officers understand the difference between cars that park in front of a house in, in that parking spot versus having been there for seventy-two hours.
So typically with the seventy-two hour process, there is a process for that. We have to mark the vehicle, we have to indicate to our dispatcher that we've marked this vehicle. There's a notice put on the vehicle that you need to move it. And then if it's not moved within that seventy-two hour period, then we issue a citation. It's, officers don't always arbitrarily go out and that's the first thing that they're looking for. But if there's either complaint or concern or an officer sees something, like I've been with the city for twenty-plus years, I've been driving around and seen vehicles that have cobwebs and mounds of leaves underneath them. Well, obviously that vehicle has, hasn't moved, so we just go through that process.
That's what I figured. And then more technically, I noticed, you know, obviously there's an escalation after non-payment for twenty-one days and then there's the additional DMV hold fee, but there's no specified timeframe, you know, after that twenty-one days. Is that then just discretionary upon the, the police department as to when, after that twenty-one days, it, it's gotten to the point where that DMV hold will be filed?
And speaking with our, our, our vendor that we work with, they usually send that sixty to ninety days if, if the citation has been paid. There's a process that they send notification to the registered owner to take care of the permit, I'm sorry, not, not permit, the citation, even when it's initially issued if it's not paid within a certain time and when it, and when it goes to that point.
All right, thank you. And I'll save my other comment for discussion. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Then I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Do we have any cards for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any comment, or comment cards asking to testify in today's public hearing.
And nothing received via email either?
That is correct.
Right. So if there are none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. I'll kick it straight to you.
I was just gonna say, in terms of cost recovery, if there was a parking violation officer in front of Starbucks every morning, we would definitely have cost recovery because people are consistently parking in that handicap spot. And even more infuriating in the striped portion because of course, that's not, you know, that's, that's, that's more, more acceptable because it's not actually the handicap spot. So I'll just say that, you know, if we are looking to have cost recovery, that would be a place I would start because that, that, and I know Councilmember Garcia's wife actually saw an instance, or maybe Councilmember Garcia himself saw an instance where the access to the ramp was blocked and it actually impacted one of our residents. So this isn't just a theoretical, don't park in the space if you're not handicapped. This is actually, you know, it's there for a reason and it actually can impact other people. So that's my PSA for today.
As a council member with someone that has a handicap placard and, and needs to use it, I, I can attest to many situations of when they cannot find parking or they're blocked in or many of those things. So thank you for bringing that up. I, I do think it's something we should take under advisement and maybe encourage a campaign around.
I would just hope that we, we do some great education on this, this new kind of a change. I knew we've gone through different eras of having other parking companies do our parking violations and I'd like people to know how much it is, you know, ahead of time, especially the violations with the, with the disabled parking. But also the parking lots, have we, I mean, I would hope that we have correct signage out, so we don't have any mistaken citations being issued. Thank you.
Captain Amos?
We do have correct signage at our public parking lots, notifying people of, of any restrictions that are, that are there. And yes, we will look into letting out information to the public.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes?
I'm just remembering the good old days when parking tickets were ten or fifteen bucks and you, you hated getting them at that time, at that rate. So we've reached the hundred dollar mark.
Do you remember those days if it was thirty-five though and then all of a sudden your first violation's a hundred and thirty-five dollars and you're like, what?
Inflation, I guess. And this is not, I mean, for public watching on TV, this is not full cost recovery. It actually costs us more than a hundred bucks to, to do this. Oh, well.
Yeah, well, I remember when I was a student at USC, parking on Twenty-Ninth Street, leaving my car on Wednesdays or wherever it was, back then, that I would say in real terms, the city of L.A. was, was much higher than the hundred dollars that we have here in Sierra Madre. But yeah, yeah, that was painful.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion for this item.
I move that we approve resolution twenty-five dash ten, approving a city parking bail schedule to establish operational costs associated with the parking enforcement, institutioning late penalties, fines and delinquent payments and authorize the finance director to make any necessary budgetary and accounting entries.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we'll move on to discussion item.
Thank you.
So I think we, that we've had moved our agenda item C to a, from a consent item to a discussion item. Mr. City Manager, how would you like to handle that? Do we have our
Finance Director Rainey will present.
Fantastic.
Good evening. Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members, city manager, city treasurer and legal counsel. My name is Anthony Rainey. I'm the finance director for the city. Tonight, I'm going to go over the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. I used to start out these discussions in previous lives by basically stating that if people needed to get to sleep because they were having problems doing that, or if there were young folks that needed some discipline, is to let them read the ACFR. It would put them to sleep or it would be considered a harsh, cruel and unusual punishment. is to let them read the ACFR. It would put them to sleep, or it would be considered a harsh, cruel, and unusual punishment. So, I'm going to try to make it a little bit more interesting. First of all, there's some people I need to thank for this. There was a transition between the finance director and my coming in. My finance staff, Selena Yang Satnam Ray, Jenny Vu, William Zaragoza, picked up the pieces and brought this through. I just happened to land in November and was able to try to put it all together again. But I want to recognize their effort in doing that. Why do we do this? Who's interested in it? Well, we do it for several reasons. First is for accountability and transparency. We have to be accountable, and we have to be transparent. Where did the money go? Why did it go? And questions. Second, as a decision-making tool. For the city council in making decisions on budget, capital, planning, fiscal policy, and other items that have a fiscal analysis, you need an audited financial statement. Third, credit worthiness and bond ratings. We have debt. One of the organizations, well, several of them, are your rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, Standard and Poor's. They, they look at this. The other is grant providers, federal, state, county, and local. They all require an audited financial statement. Finally, there's compliance with auditing assurance, and that basically says that they have to be fair, accountable, and complete. Who else does an ACFR? In the public sector, it's states, it's cities, it's counties, it's special districts, and even state colleges, community colleges, and other schools. School districts also do ACFRs. So, it has an important requirement in terms of doing it. In the staff agenda letter that I, I've crafted, I tried to make it so that people can read it and know how to, where to find things and what they mean. What is the ACFR? Alphabet soup? No. It's a detailed presentation of the city's financial condition as of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. The ACFR is a set of government financial statements comprising of a financial report of the city that complies with the requirements of what we call generally accepted accounting principles, also known as GAAP. This is created and circulated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB. And as I said before, GASB does pronouncements for state, local, school districts, and special districts in terms of accounting. It provides a critical information to understanding the city's fiscal health. And it's comprised of the following sections, and I outline them here. There's the management discussion and analysis, the MDNA, the audited financial statements that were audited by our external auditor, and the notes to the financial statements. And then finally, there is something that's called the supplementary and statistical information. Now, I bring this up because often when we're looking for investors in the city or new businesses, they usually go look at your ACFR, and they look at the supplementary and statistical information. We have demographic and economic information in there. So, how did we do? There were some, I received some questions about the ACFR. And I want to just cover a few of the areas. First, there is a question that the overall net position grew, yet we in, we had a deficit in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three of negative one point eight million, but we show a surplus of five point one million in twenty-three, twenty-four. How did we do it? Well, there's some driving factors that improved our net position. First, total revenues increased. In two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, it was thirty-two point seven million. In twenty-three, twenty-four, however, it was thirty-seven point nine four million, a change of five point two four million. Total expenses, they were thirty-four point eight million, and in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, they were thirty-one point one million. So, the total expenses decreased. And finally, one of the things that you may not be able to find very easily in this document, ugly document it is, is what's called the net pension liability. And that is basically where we are on the hook because of CalPERS actuarial studies of what we'll be paying for pensions and OPEB. That's basically when people retire their health benefits, dental benefits, and the like. When I looked at it, in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, it was five point nine eight million. But in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, it went down to two point, two million. So, that's a three point seven eight lower pension expenses. So, that in itself made it so that our, our net position increased. And for the longest, you know, looking at that and say, well, where was it? Did we get more revenue? No, it wasn't more revenue. Did we really cut back and not do things? No, it wasn't that. It's an accounting measure in terms of the actuarial studies that are done by the state and what they charge us. And an important thing is, this city made some important decisions in terms of refinancing its pension liabilities. It's coming to fruition now. You are now seeing the benefits of that in twenty-two, in twenty-three, twenty-four on your financial statements. There, we had a lot of changes in terms of increasing in, in revenue. Not anything super significant, but all in all, revenues did increase by five point two four million over the prior fiscal year. Expenses and other costs, by adding the net pension liability, overall, everything from general government, public safety, police, debt service, library fund, and other things decrease. Now, there are some questions that were also asked about our investments. Boy, your investments did really, really well. What, what is it? Are we investing more? Are, are we index funds? What is it? You have to remember that we got some funds of money, and this city doesn't let funds just sit there idly. We invest them in life. This is what we did. Number one, we got some ARPA money. We don't just let it just sit in account. We invest it. That's one of the reasons why we got such a high return. Number two, we had money that we got for the library. And library, the library, I forgot the name of it, but we got a large sum of money for that. We didn't just let it sit there. We invested that. I'm telling you that now is because, don't expect our investments to be as high in the future. But that's one of the reasons why this was, this increase. When you read this document, you have what's called the annual ACFR. That's an interesting document. There's a couple of other ones that are in here that I wanted to let the audience know what they are and what they mean. We also have the auditor's report on internal controls and compliance. As an elected governing body, you want to know something about internal controls. And this is something that all auditors do, and they give a, a report. Our report basically said that we, we had internal controls. There is a difference of opinion on one of their findings that didn't affect the audit. But all in all, they basically say that we have good internal controls. And as, of course, as we know, we as staff are responsible for your internal controls so that you as a governing body are responsible for management controls. Management controls in terms of ordinances, resolutions, and the like. The second attachment we have is what's called the Statement of Auditing Standards. SAS one fourteen required communication with those charged with governance. And it's basically, in all audits, whether it's public, private, nonprofit, the governing body has to issue this in terms of required communication. They don't want this, well, I didn't know. Nobody told me, when the financial statements come back and there's an audit finding. With that, we had a clean audit. It's recommended that the city council receive and file the ACFR along with the accompanying auditor's report on internal controls and compliance. And SAS one fourteen letter for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. This action formally acknowledges the completion of these reports and their availability for public view. One last thing is, if we get approval for this, I then have to report it through LGRS to the state controller. I then have to file it with MSRP so that bondholders can see it. I then have to give copies of it to everyone that we have a grant with. So, it's a very, very important document. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. That was an excellent presentation. Questions?
Sure. Yeah, just, just kind of following up. Thank you, Director Rainey, for, for the ACFR and all the staff for, for, like you said, kind of putting the pieces together. And you came and you put it all together. So, thank you for that. So, you were talking about the net pension liability. And when I hear the word liability, net pension liability, I'm thinking in FASB, not GASB, I'm thinking a balance sheet. In GASB, we're talking about statement of net, net position. But the numbers that you cited weren't our actual liability, that five million. I think we're more like nine million liability. Was this, is this the actual, like, the unfunded actuarial liability plus our, our pension payment? Or are we talking just the change in our, in our actual balance sheet item? As far as the five, the five point nine eight million, the two point two million?
It's the change in our, in our, let me look at the.
And I'm not trying to catch you. I just want to make sure I understand.
It's not, it's not the balance sheet.
It's the expense.
It's the expense.
Yeah, you said that was a lower expense.
Yes.
So.
And that, that's attributable also to, we basically get ratings from Cal, readings. We get numbers from CalPERS as to what we should put in there for what our contributions will be. Sometimes they say it'll be six percent. Sometimes they say it will be four. And it's based on what CalPERS, and they're two years in advance. So, if CalPERS does better, our liability goes down. And when your liabilities go down, hence your expenses go down, and it's reflected on there.
Thank you. And that, that's what I was looking for. So, as, a couple of things, as the discount, either, either the discount rate might change or the fund does better, are, we do, we're going to make a payment anyway because that's our obligation for public employees and paying into their, let's say, CalPERS benefits. But then we're also on the hook for, let's say, an amortized amount of our unfunded liability. And if so, if the fund does better, we have a, a lower unfunded liability payment that has to be made.
Yes, that's, that's referred to as the UAL.
Yeah.
And we all, everyone in finance always worries about that.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Other questions?
Next in line, I guess. Could you explain to our, our constituents and our residents what a net zero-based budget is versus what we used prior to two thousand seventeen, or two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget year?
Okay. A net zero-based budgeting, it's the concept of, I have to go back years. There is a person years ago by the name of David Stockman, who was the OMB director under President Ronald Reagan, who basically was looking at doing budgets, starting from a zero base. What does that mean? It basically, you start with nothing, and then you're required to prioritize your services that you're doing and the products that you're producing, and put a cost to that. For example, I've done a zero-based budget with the city, and I've basically helped the fire department. And it was basically, what do you start with first? And it's like, is it the fire engine? And is it suppression? Is it inspection? Is it maintenance? Those are all tough decisions. Those become the building blocks from zero on up. If we're going to start, this is what we do. Of course, we finance, people basically said, if you have debt, that needs to be the number one thing. But we, there's a, there's a debate with us around that, with other folks. But we basically build it with building blocks, zero-based, all the way up. I will be proposing to the city that we go to what's called a modified zero-based budget. Let me tell you what that is. Rather than starting at zero, the finance department, basically, we do our revenue projections, and we basically do the base budgets, personal services, your MOUs, your agreements, and the like, and the COLAs, and the benefits by your positions. And then we also do the same thing with the non-personal services. And those would mean that any contracts, agreements, or MOUs that you have, that you're liable for, those become part of the base. A zero, a modified zero-based budget is basically saying that whatever you're doing in twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm only going to give you the increases so that you can fund the same thing. And then there's this concept called decision packages in modified zero base. It basically, we give the city manager a decision package, a decrement package. If he basically says, hey, I want you to go down twenty percent from the base budget. And you basically go into your line items, and we present it to, to him, and him and his, his staff look at it. And then you have an increment package, and those are above the base. Well, why, why do you do that? Pray tell. You know, isn't that a lot? What it is, is that gives the city manager an opportunity that if he decides that he wants to, to produce a budget without any revenue increases, because we've already done that in your, your base budget, he can basically say, I'm going to take this decrement and replace it with this increment and make them even. That is the new way that a lot of cities and counties, and some states are doing budgeting. It makes it faster, and it makes it easier to do, and it bases it on what you call a decision package. Again, David Stockman years ago, he basically, you have a decision package. And a decision package is a short, one-page, very succinct. If you can't explain it in one page, then, you know, it's, it's too complicated. So, that's what the difference between the zero base, what we're doing now, where we start at zero, and a modified zero-based budget.
So, with your modified, the way I, I think of this, and I relate it to where my, my grandmother, my great-grandmother always taught us, is that, one, if you don't have the money, you can't spend it. But number two is that you always pay off the things you know you have to pay. Like a hu, like me, as a homeowner, have to pay my mortgage, you know, my, my insurance, the things that are most important. Or you know you have to pay your contracts, and then go down to the things that, that aren't the mandatory. Absolutely, you have to pay these things by contract and by MOU.
Yes. And unlike the federal government, that.
And state.
Basically, hey, we have these expenditures, but we only have these revenues. Well, we'll issue treasury bonds, and we'll let our next generation pick it up.
Exactly.
That is not allowed for school districts. It's not allowed for special districts. It's not allowed for cities. It's not allowed for counties. It's not allowed for states. We got to come in at that, that target. Plus, we have these things called reserve funds. So, even at that. So even at that, a portion of what you have in your budget is put in reserve. So there is really, you're not expending all of your operating funds in order to do that. So we do just like your grandmother did, and we're basically living within our means.
Thank you. That's a great explanation.
So if I could follow up on that, since you brought up reserves. So who pays attention to the reserves? Who is it important to? And what are they looking for in reserves?
Who looks at reserves? The first is anyone that you have debt with. So if we have any outstanding debt, they're going to look at our reserves. If we were to go out and, or do something and buy some new equipment, you basically said, well, we don't have the money, but let's issue some debt. They look at your reserves because they want to know that if you issue bonds and they buy the bonds, that not only, of course, they're going to put your general fund up as part of the collateral, but another thing that they're going to look at is, do you have any reserves? If you're operating with no reserves, you're quite a risk. And in borrowing, risk is rewarded with higher interest rates. So your cost of borrowing would go down. So we have a very, very healthy set of reserves. And as our budget increases, that amount of the money goes up too, also. And there's, we, we call it, there's something that's called restricted and unrestricted net position. That's just a fancy way of saying, all right, just because we have all of this money, you as a city council only get to play with the unrestricted amounts. So people think, when they say, oh, the city has a really big budget, how come they don't pave the streets? Well, we're combining restricted and unrestricted. And I would say, for this city, it's not even, I would say it's in the mid-50s to 60% are unrestricted. So as big as the budget is, with unrestricted, you can't touch. So that's why we have to have reserves for those restricted funds that we operate with.
And do we have a lot in the reserves? If we wanted to draw down on the reserves, could we draw a significant amount on it? Is it, like, what's your policy on, on drawing on those reserves? What's your perspective on it?
Well, my policy on reserves is, it's basically, is it a one-time or ongoing requirement that you have? I'm of the old school that one-time money, and to me, a reserve is one-time, should only go for one-time expenses. So if you wanted to hire more staff, but if you wanted to hire more staff, and you said only for a fixed period of time, we need it to carry us over for two or three years or so, then I would say, yeah, that's, that's a proper. But if you basically said, hey, you know, we want to get 13 new staff, and we'll bring them on and we'll worry about it later, I would strongly advise against that. Typically, reserves are looked at for, again, if you're in situations where you have, like, public safety, that's something that our reserves, I've seen in most cities, you need public safety. So you, you tap into that until you find another viable funding source of revenue. But it's usually physical, fixed, fixed assets primarily, maybe IT or one-time things like that.
Great. Thank you. Did you have others?
What is, what is the total amount of our reserve account?
Last year, it was, hold on, I've got that here. It's about four million.
Any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
Captain McCaffrey?
Yes, please. So thank you for explaining the differential in the, the change between the projected results and the actual results. And I do particularly appreciate that you made the point that of that increase in revenue of approximately five and a quarter million dollars, that a portion of that was, you know, was one-time revenue. And so I guess my initial question is, you know, roughly speaking, you know, how much of that was recurring versus one-time? And, and the reason I ask is because, you know, we use the actual, you know, the actual results to inform projections for future years. And so, you know, I'm interested to know how much of the increase in revenue is something that we can count on maybe continuing to be at that increased level? And then eventually, how does that change our projections for future year performances?
Well, in terms of revenue, before yesterday, I would have said, well, we can pretty much do projections and the like. But because there was an announcement about grants and almost a freeze on that, because after all, with your general fund and your operating, you have this thing called matching requirements. So there's a lot of things that, if they go with that decision, may mean that the general fund, you will be coming to you with the general fund to do things that normally we would be getting external funding for. I would have to tell you that until I do the mid-year budget, and I will give you our projections in terms of revenue, I, I'll get back to you on that. As far as expenditures, again, your ongoing are always personal services, salaries and benefits. There's an important thing to remember, though, is that it's just not people who are here, it's servicing our CalPERS and our OPEB that's ongoing. So you have to service that. So after I take care of those two things, I basically come back. And then, as I was saying, for non-personal services, like a contract, like equipment and the like, if there are MOUs, if there are agreements, or things like that, I have to factor in that you can't just cut these off. They're, they're recurring. They're not non-recurring. You can't just cut it off. I have to factor that in and then get you, get you a number.
Thank you.
So if I could follow up on that, so as a part of the budget process going forward, you're going to be looking at a forecast going forward of our revenue and our expenses? And looking kind of what the trends are? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Great. And, and that right now it's...
But we do, we do one more thing. In the document, let me give you an analogy. You do this in your personal life. People say, oh, it's my income, and these are my expenses, and this is what I have left. No, that's not true. You do just like the government does. It's called fund balance. And what fund balance is, how much do you have in your savings account? How much you have in your investments? How much you have in your checking account? That's your fund balance. So the way we look at it for budgetary, we bring you revenues minus expenditures. But when we do the projections, we basically do beginning fund balance plus revenue minus expenditure equals your ending fund balance. Why do we do that? Is because we have debt service in the future and other liabilities that may come up. You never see anyone coming to a city council meeting during budget and say, oh, don't, well, some people do, and say, oh, well, we can just go into and use our, our fund balance. You have your reserves, and then some are bold enough to say, let's lose your fund balance. Fund balance to me, and I've told my staff, is one of the most sacred things that I guard. We have to have a healthy and good fund balance. So I, I would say that, just as you as an individual have your bank account, and you have your savings account, so you have money in there, and so you have your revenue, which is your income, you put it into that account, that goes in. So you have what you have saved, what you have your checking, plus your income, then your expenditures, you go hog wild, you go to Las Vegas. Then you have your remaining balance. That tells you whether you're rich net worth equity or you're poor. And I always try to teach my relatives that a rich person has a high net worth, not a high income. And the same thing should be looked at for a city.
Thank you. Captain McCaffrey, the job. Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, and I think, kind of following up on what you asked about how you look at different trends, and great answer to that question, by the way. So you mentioned that we had, you didn't say the numbers, but in my mind, it was something about 12 and a half million dollars extra in our LEAF funds, which would be library and ARPA funds, that, again, non-recurring, we can't assume that we will have that. But I, I will just make a comment and then ask your opinion regarding maybe budgeting on this. As we're thinking about, and I know this is getting a little wonky here, but as we're thinking about what we call the yield curve, that's years to maturity on a bond and the, the rate that you earn, right, on the vertical axis. Kind of in a normally shaped yield curve, it looks like a hill, right? It increases at a decreasing rate, and then you get to the top of the hill, and then you're kind of on the mesa, right? Our yield curve hasn't been like that for the past couple of years. The short side of the yield curve has been very high, giving us returns of, in US Treasuries, 4% or 5%. And on the 30-year, 4% or 5%, so it's been pretty flat. But the normally shaped yield curve is the shape that I was kind of describing, increasing at a decreasing rate and kind of getting flat as we go out. So when we talk about LEAF and we talk about investing in US Treasuries, we tend to, the LEAF needs to be liquid, therefore, the LEAF is based on short-term US Treasury maturities. So given that, when we're doing our budgeting, are you, because that's coming up, right? Our, our budgeting period's coming up. Are you going, what's your philosophy regarding, because we got a lot of money from our investments the past couple of years, and it's, and I would say it's rare. What's your philosophy as far as budgeting that portion of revenue for expenses, covering expenses?
Well, it's, it's funny you should bring this up. One of the things that I've mentioned to the city manager I'm looking at is, is it's a investment instrument called CLASS that's used by a lot of school districts and now a lot of cities. Does, are the returns more than LEAF? They're comparable, but if I need liquid cash, what I have to do with LEAF is, all right, I've got to get on the phone and call before, I think it's 10:30 in the morning, get them to process it, and then wait for a check or an electronic funds transfer. Whereas with CLASS, it's much faster. I am not one to look for investment income to run a city. That was tried in, I think it was called Orange County and others, and nothing good came, came out of that. But I do agree that you have to look at things, because a lot of people are questioning whether or not treasury bill bonds are going to, if, what their yields are going to be, especially if they don't, if Congress should suddenly say, hey, we're not going to pass the debt, that, that could have an impact. So I am thinking about that. I've looked at CLASS, I'm going to be meeting with our, our bank, looking at other things like that. Do we do that in terms of revenue? The answer is, not really, and I'll be honest with you, because it's not anything significant. I mean, yeah, $400,000, $700,000, it, it sounds like a lot, but on an investment, it's only one time. So my caveat would be, if we're going to look at anything like that, it would be a one-time shot that we get it for only a one-time expenditure. So as far as, most of the time, staff or, or things like that, I would say, no, let's do it. If we're going to buy some equipment or something like that, of course, I'd ask for, what's the maintenance going to be if we buy a new water pump or something like that? So that's my philosophy.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And also, you mentioned, I, I think it was, I don't know if it was on the revenue side or the expense side, we're pretty much balanced budget typically, right? $31 million. And we, we had a, we had a, our water superintendent gave a presentation earlier today, but I, I think it's important for the public to understand what portion of that, let's say, $31 million or whatever the number was, is general fund versus enterprise or, or the, the utility. Because I, I think when people hear the size of our budget, they, they tend to forget that a large portion of that is actually the utility.
Yes, and...
I'm sorry if you don't have that in front of you. I'm not trying to gotcha.
It's not in front of you, but I, I can give just a, an overview. We have an overall budget that we present, and a lot of people are, you know, oh, you guys have a lot of money. It's kind of like, I used to have an uncle that used to ask me, why aren't the streets being paved? We pay all of this money. Why don't we use property tax? Well, this thing happened years ago, it's called Prop 13, that changed everything. So most of the times, you rely on this thing called the gas tax that's allocated from the state. Well, that $31 million, that big figure that I'm giving you, are combined funds. They are not all, they are not all unrestricted. So there's a, and I'll get back to you, there's a smaller portion of that that we're limited as to what we can use. So if in the ACFR, you can see that we break the funds down. Now, what water is, is an enterprise fund. What does that mean? It runs just like a business. It's rare that you go into your general fund, mainly property taxes, UUT and the like, to buy things for utilities. Why? Because this is something, you're providing a product, your equipment, your assets, to provide a service, clean and safe drinking water. You go by the rates that you charge, and it's restricted. A lot of people in my field have gotten in trouble by borrowing from the utilities and using it for the general fund, and then say, oh, we'll pay you back. The auditors eventually catch up with you when you, when you did, when you do that. So I'll probably do something called the, I usually do this at cities, called the Color of Money. We do, and I tried to explain this very briefly in the agenda item and in the, I explained it in the transmittal letter in here, the type of funds. They do this because in government, they, I would say, before 19, the 1920s, you would go in and it's like, you'd pay for a parking ticket, and it would be the same person that you paid for a parking ticket, the same person that swept your street. It's basically, it was no rhyme or reason. They had no accounting standards. Nowadays, in a fund, it's like a, a separate checking account. You put this money in here, it's restricted for streets. You put this money in here, well, if you want more police officers, you can pay for it. If you want more community development staff, you can pay for it. Then you have restrictions on certain revenues. You get a, you get a permit. Most places say that revenue that you get for that has to go back for that service. So it's a lot more complicated than most citizens understand. Yes, it's a lot of money, but no, we can't go and fix the potholes in, in your street or anything like that because of the restrictions. And it would be great if, I think, they could teach this in school so that people would understand public finance. But it's the same thing you encounter whether you're in a school district, a college, a state college or university, a city or a county, and even the state. There's different pots of money, and that's what, for example... There's different pots of money and that's what, for example, with the grant. Some people say, oh, you're getting a grant, oh, we can hire, you can hire more staff. Well, yes and no. I can hire someone, but this is what they have to do. And it's usually restrictions, they have to be qualified in order to do this. And with the grant, it's usually, I use my cherished fund balance in order to pay for it and wait for reimbursement later on, like I'm doing with the Eaton fires. I am knocking on wood that I don't wait a long time to get my reimbursements for that, just as a lot of cities had to do with the COVID. Because even now, we're, we still have some of those on the books.
I think that's an important point, thank you. And because there's a lot of discussion amongst community regarding, oh, you bought a building, so you had a lot of money. But maybe that, we used our reserves to buy this building. And then if we sold the building, it wouldn't go into our normal revenue, right? It would go back into reserves. And then your recommendation is you don't use reserves to then fund ongoing expenses.
Right, and then I would also, as I tell many of my relatives who are quote asset-rich because they just bought a twenty-six Jaguar, is when you pull off the lot and you try to sell it again, that asset has depreciated in value. And not only has it depreciated, if you want to liquidate that library or what other building that you're, you're not going to get close to anything that you paid for it. So that's not a very good way of thinking that, hey, we can, we can convert these assets into liquid cash. No, that's not the way it goes. And the same is true in government in terms of assets. We're asset-rich, but we're cash constrained.
Some might argue that a real estate investment is appreciating asset rather than a depreciating asset.
In our area.
But that's another conversation, I think.
And then, when you liquidate that appreciating asset, you have to find out tax reasons why. You have to buy something worth more, or you're going to be hit by Uncle Sam.
I have a question too about this. We were talking with the water department and how most of their funds, not, I shouldn't say most, but a large portion of their expenses are coming in through our water bills and we pay for it and it kind of sustains itself very well that way. And I looked at your page eleven on table three, it's the net cost of government activities for the year ending this June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And we see that the public works total cost of services was four million, three hundred and sixteen thousand. And then the total program revenue was three million, four hundred and six thousand. And that's a net cost services of nine hundred and ten thousand, which is very, it's economically sound. It looks great that they're paying for a large majority of themselves. And then I see that the culture and recreation is one million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And then the total program revenue is nine hundred and thirty-one. And that's really great because that's so many services that they provide. And they're actually, a lot of those services are coming back in through, you know, payments either from grants or from programs or from repayment, like if you're going to run a race, you have to pay to run that race, so things like that. My question though is for public safety, it has an eight million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand total cost, total cost of services, total program revenues is one million, thirty-two thousand. Could, your public works like your, I'm sorry, your public safety like your fire department, could their funds that they generate, say for instance, the revenue off of ambulance services that they collect money for, could those also be used like an enterprise, like the water department, and used for the fire department?
Yes, but typically when the fire department does its budget, one of the things that they present me is what their reimbursements from ambulance services are. So I factor that in. Here's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to avoid breaking the budget down into fiefdoms so that, oh, the fire department is here and it's basically, well, why should we fund that? Because they don't bring in any revenues. It's like, does the city council, we're funding them, do they bring in any revenue? No, then why are we funding them? This is what the general fund is for. The general fund is there as an unrestricted so that you as policymakers can make decisions as to what it can or cannot be used for. If you want more, something more in fire, you can do that. If you want more in planning, you can do that. If you want more in community development, you can do that. The general fund gives you, as the council, a lot of opportunities to make these decisions. These decisions are tough. For the enterprise fund, you basically pointed out that, yeah, well, they, they're accruing more. You know, look, they're expenses and they're revenues, but I get hit with this thing called depreciation. I get hit with this thing on wear and tear on their machinery and equipment. I mean, we had, they need a loader now. Okay, where are you, where are you going to, who are you going to call? Where are you going to get the money for that? They are very, very intense in terms of equipment, non-personal services, that when they need it, they need it. So that money is maintained there in an enterprise fund so that you have the ability to do that. And I think a lot of people think it's like a retail, oh, you, but it's not.
My question is, why is that different than the fire department?
Because they're an enterprise fund.
Why can't the fire department be an enterprise fund?
Because that would be saying that, okay, if we made them an enterprise fund, how much would we charge for putting on a fire? We'd have to charge people. Do we charge by the call? Do we charge, do we charge inspections? Do we charge for fire suppression after they come out and put it out? What's the charge for that? And do you have to swipe your credit card in before they arrive?
I guess I meant fire department because fire department covers EMS, so the ambulance specifically then.
That, well, that's a complicated issue because there's an equity issue on there. And it's like this, is yes, there are some reimbursements on that, but do you want to go a full enterprise so that, a lot of people fear that, we're not going to go into that community because those people don't have any health insurance. We're not going to be reimbursed. So our times are going to be, our fire department would never do that. But I'm just saying that it's basically done this way because it funds a portion of it, but not its entirety. The policy question is, do you want your public safety to be a hundred percent self-supporting, just like the water department? That's a really, really tough, a tough decision to make. And for me, how do I advise the police chief, the fire chief, on how to go about doing it? Hey, what do you, how much do you charge for a call? Well, Anthony, what kind of call is it? You know, it's the, do we do a cost allocation study or a set of fees on those? Those are some of the things that, investigations. If they have, if the fire and police do investigations, is that a charge back? Those are things that, I call it the slippery slope. You may not want to go there because it may constrain you.
Well, and that'd be like, I'm responding to your leak. I'm responding to your leak, but I'm going to have to charge you this amount. So it's kind of a universal oversight.
And then what do, and then what do we do if we basically say, well, we'll be there, but we'll bill you and they don't pay? My accounts receivable would grow. I'd probably say, you know, why don't we add a fee to finance for the collection of that for unpaid? I mean, that's the type of, it's kind of like with the debate about library fines and the equity on that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, a fundamental difference between an enterprise fund and something like the fire department or the police department is our rates. So for all enterprises, we have rates that are adopted and through the Prop two eighteen process. They're not based on reimbursements, that, which we don't control. We control the rates. Reimbursements we don't control, that's the insurer. And they're not fees either, because fees are about cost recovery. Rates aren't necessarily about cost recover, well, they are about cost recovery, but the process to approve rates and fees is different. So when you think about an enterprise, you got to think about it in terms of what rates are we going to charge to provide this service? And currently for the fire department, police department, you don't have adopted rates to provide services.
And that's a set amount, correct?
He's also getting at, correct?
I believe it was a set amount for the ambulance services amount or reimbursement amount. Wasn't that a LA County set amount?
Not, the reimbursement amount?
Well, the services amount that we charge was the same amount as LA County's rate. I remember we approved that maybe six months ago.
As a fee, right?
Yes.
As a, as a cost recovery?
I believe so, yeah.
Not a rate.
Yeah.
Not, not, not a, yeah, not a rate, because there, there's two separate processes to adopt both of them.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions? Then I'd like to open this up for public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
You do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. If there are no comments, bring it back to discussion. I think we've had a fair amount of discussions. Is there any other discussion on it?
Good call, Mr. Mayor, for pulling this from the consent.
Thank you for that, thank you for the support. If there isn't, I will entertain a motion to adopt this item. Oh, sorry, receiving file, thank you. All right, then with that, so received, there we go. Exactly, so then we'll go on to our second discussion item. So City Attorney Gargosian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the council is aware, the City of Sierra Madre is a member of the California League of Cities. And as a member of the California League of Cities, we have a representative assigned to us for the Los Angeles County Division. This representative periodically reaches out to the city manager and I and says, we'd like the city's support on X bill. And most of the time, we can't provide that support because we can't agendize a discussion of that bill in time to provide that division representative with feedback support or, or no support for a bill. So the solution here, potentially if the city council wants to go this route, is to adopt a legislative priorities policy. This policy in the agenda packet does two things. So first, it sets legislative priorities. And second, it delegates decision-making authority. So there's two separate components here for you all to think about. Now, with respect to the first component, the policy priorities, the language you have in your agenda packet is word for word taken from what CalCities has on their website. CalCities has a one pager with four bullet points of advocacy priorities, and I just took that and I copy-pasted it into this document. The city council's welcome to amend that. If the city council wants to get into a discussion about it, I'd recommend potentially creating an ad hoc committee to discuss it because there's, if you want to get into the details, there are a lot of factors to consider, including a forty-page CalCities advocacy priorities memo. So that's the first point. The second point regarding the delegation of authority, there are really three types of frameworks that I'm aware of. One, the first one, which is currently what we have, the default rule, is the city council gets to decide whether or not they want to support a bill. The second hybrid approach I've seen, which is pretty rare, is the city, the city council adopts policy priorities and entrusts the mayor and the city manager together to come up with, to determine whether or not to support a bill or not. The third option, which is the one that this, that's included in your agenda packet, is the city manager as the executive officer is in charge with executing on your policy priorities. This, what you have in your agenda packet is a template taken from the California Special Districts Association. Unfortunately, the League of California Cities doesn't have a template, so I just borrowed a template from a sister organization. So before the city council tonight, you have your staff, you have your staff recommendation, but I think you're answering two questions. One is, do you like these policy priorities? And if not, do you want to adopt different policy priorities and how do you want to adopt those? And the second question is, who gets to decide who's, whether to support or not support bills? So I think those are the two questions to answer for the city council.
Great, and that's end your report?
Yes.
Great, let's start over here, Councilwoman Creves, let's start with you with questions. Yes.
Yes, a couple of questions. You said that the hybrid approach is not very prevalent. And I guess maybe, you might not know this, but you know, obviously there are many cities that have a council structure like ours where everyone is, you know, elected as a position and then we just rotate the mayoralship, you know, on an annual basis or on some timely basis. Obviously, there are other cities that have separate mayoral elections, you know, Pasadena, LA, obviously being examples. So do you have a sense of perhaps the reason why the hybrid approach is not as prevalent is because most cities have a separately elected mayor and it isn't sort of like one of a body? You know, it has its own, you know, kind of sets of, sets of responsibilities and authorities?
Yeah, so I don't know how prevalent it is in those cities where they have a directly elected mayor, but I can see the logic for implementing that in those cities because most of the time, if you have a directly elected mayor, what that means is that the individual council members are elected by district. So they have a very specific group in the community that they're representing, a fraction of the community. Whereas the mayor almost always, no, not almost always, is going to be, if they're directly elected, they're going to not be by district, they're going to be at large. I should, I should take that back, it's not always, it's most of the time, they're going to be at large. So if the mayor is elected at large, he has the interest of the entire city in mind as the, probably the city manager or city administrator would. So it does make more sense in those cities to have that hybrid approach.
Any other questions?
They also have legislative policy positions even.
I don't have any questions, no.
I do.
Yes.
Do we have any idea, should we not create a policy and just sit on our hands? What's the, what if any repercussions there might be from CalCities?
There are no repercussions. I'll say when I review, so legislative analyst is in charge of providing impartial information to the legislator. And you can see this in legislative history, they provide summaries. And at the end of those summaries, they always say, well, these groups are in support of this bill and these groups are against this bill. And when you look at those, you see like a long list of cities often that say they're in support or against. And legislators take that into account when they adopt legislation. So there is no con here in, with respect to CalCities in not adopting policy priorities. It's just, we lose our ability to weigh in at the state level on legislation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions, probably, probably comments, okay?
I guess I have one question, there's a couple of times that there's been ad hoc committees, like when I joined the public safety ad hoc League of Cities Policy Committee where we looked at tons of different legislation and what we were going to support and not, but that was me as a role on that team versus like us as a council. So I know some of us are part of a fire insurance, like ad hoc committee too. So this would basically be like the same type of thing where we're giving, we're looking at certain things that might affect our city and we do want it or do not want to give input. And then we would be able to add our names to the lists of what we advocate for, what we do not.
Right, so an ad hoc doesn't have the authority to speak on behalf of the city. But when you adopt these set of policies, if you adopt them, and you entrust somebody, either a hybrid approach or the entire council or the city manager, then that individual or group of people have the authority to speak on behalf of the city and can, and that'll be reflected in the legislative analyst's report.
Can you talk a little bit about the state legislative process? Like kind of how, how quickly bills can change, kind of types of things that bills change? Like there's this thing like called a gut and amend, and then there's like placeholder bills. Can you give us like just some of the flavor of kind of the, the speed and the complexity with which the state works?
Okay, I'll try. The, it is pretty complex. So oftentimes, as people are aware, a bill starts in a specific chamber. So we have a bicameral legislator and then it starts in one of the houses. And it starts in a committee. And there are usually three committee hearings before it gets to the floor. And there are usually three committee hearings before it gets to the floor. And then once it gets to the floor, it has to go to the other house, and the other house has to go, go through their committees and approve it. Amendments happen in each of these committees, and amendments may happen on the floor, and amendments may happen in different houses. Uh, and the process is pretty quick. Uh, the turnaround time usually is, when we get one of these emails from our, uh, division representative, it's usually like, I need to know within a week whether you guys are in support or not in support. Uh, so the turnaround time is pretty quick, and we don't have enough time and, or staff to, um, to properly uh research the bill, to draft the staff report, and to present it to the board in time, not putting aside all the noticing requirements we'd have to go through as well, obviously, as part of the seventy-two hour noticing.
A, and, thank you for that. Uh, a, a, and when you're looking at, at positions, what's the array of kind of positions that people um put out there on, on these bills? Like, like, you know, i- is it just support, is it just oppose, is it, is, is there gradations in between?
Yes, there are, there are, there, um, so there are a number. You, I've seen, I've seen oppose, I've seen uh support, I've seen oppose unless amended, I've seen neutral positions. Uh, there, there are, there are gradations, and that's also for the city council to determine if, if you wanna create those gradations in your policy priorities uh rec, resolution.
Got it.
I have one follow-up question.
Please.
Um, just anecdotally, when you get those um requests, do you have a sense of the response rate? I mean, I, I assume that, you know, our legislative, uh, as, you know, assigned legislative person has, you know, however many cities, and then they're obviously canvassing the rest of the cities in the, in the league. My sense is that most cities don't respond one way or the other because those lists, unless it's a hot button issue for the most part, from what I see, those lists are not usually that long, I, on either side.
They're, they're not that long. I think like the longest I've seen in this legislative cycle was, of the housing bills I reviewed, maybe like thirty cities weighed in on one of the bills, and that was a lot.
In, in approximately how many cities are there in state?
Four hundred eighty-three.
Exactly. Other questions?
I guess, I guess that kind of jogged a question, some of this, some of the questions that were asked. So I wanna make sure I understand what's in front of us. Um, so are we talking about advocacy and supporting policy or specifically assembly bills and senate bills as they kind of make their way through the process?
Uh, it would be, and let me just think through this, um. Yeah, I believe it's, it's also regulations, so it's not just bills, it's also regulations of, of, within the executive branch, like uh adopted by departments. But, yeah, I think it's limited to assembly bills, senate bills, and regulations.
Are you, are you asking that question, or are you asking the difference between like lobbying on, on our behalf versus supporting as, as asked?
That's kind of embedded in my question. Um, I'm, I'm asking, he answered, he answered the question, but, um, especially the regulation portion of it. But, um, yeah, we're not, I don't wanna get to discussion yet, but I'm, 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 I'm thinking of things.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I interpreted your question differently, so thank you.
But maybe you interpreted right.
And your jog gave me a jog. So are we looking at this for certain organizations? We've talked about CalCities. We also have the Clean Power Alliance in here. We're part of the COG, we're part of, like, uh, uh, do we have? Ha, do, uh, do, are you asking us to draw boundaries around that as well as what organizations we would or wouldn't support opinions from, or?
I, I'm, I'm not asking the, this is completely a policy decision for the city council to make. I just didn't feel comfortable using any policy language that I crafted, so I photo, so I copy pasted the language from CalCities because we're a member of CalCities, and that's why I use CalCities, but that's totally arbitrary.
But, but what I mean is that if someone came to us, you know, one of the, the organizations came to us and said, we want you to sign on to this letter, you, you, you haven't, we don't have anything in the current resolution that says which organizations we would, there is.
Yeah, and one of the instances, it says summaries of existing policy and guidelines, blah, blah, blah. The city council may revise the list based on input from some other local government associations such as the Clean Air Power Alliance. See attachments, see.
But, but it doesn't limit us to, to anything, right?
No, I mean, we got an email today, I think, from a, a city asking us to sign on to something like, it was, it was more of an outreach from an individual city wanting support from other cities. I mean, it, it, it's not even just organizations. We oftentimes get outreach from you know, other, other city, you know, mayors or city council people.
And, and the city manager, I'm sure he gets it all the time.
Great. Other questions?
I do have a question for the city manager. Would this make your, help you do your job better?
I think, you know, I reflect back in just, this past month, the city of Arcadia reached out to us and they wanted support as they were going after some um, some grants for uh bike lanes, and we brought it to council, and because we had a special meeting, uh, we missed the deadline. So it, it, it does help, does put me in a position to be able to help other local agencies. Um, we could have responded to that really quickly and, and been a supporter, but unfortunately, because of the, the delay, we weren't able to participate. Yeah. I, I think i- if you're asking for me, I think if the hybrid model makes a lot of sense because I could have input from, from the body, at least one member, um, I think would be beneficial for me.
All right, last call for questions. Open this up for public comment. Did we receive any public comment?
We did not, Mr. Mayor.
And, all right, I don't see any public comment in the room, so we'll bring her back to discussion. What's, what's your feeling?
I'll go first, cuz I feel kind of strongly, as I, I think I uh signaled last week when we, we decided to move it. Um, I'm just gonna be frank, I think that the value of our decision one way or the other to support most of, I mean, Arcadia might be an, an, an exception, as, as the city manager just mentioned. The value that our yay or nay on supporting these things, to me, is relatively negligible, and I think putting into words what this body's priorities are would be quite a lift, and that would be just this body which is going to change in, you know, twenty-two months or whatever. Um, so I, I just find, I'm from a cost benefit analysis that this is gonna be a lot of, for me at least, I mean, obviously, if others are in, in, in favor of, of adopting this, then it's not a lot of work. But if we were gonna go down this road, I would wanna have a, an ad hoc committee and talk about what our priorities are because I'm not always personally aligned with the positions that CalCities, for example, takes. And so I, I just, again, just sort of feel like from a, the amount of work that for me to get comfortable, and, and nothing against the, the city manager, just for us to get comfortable outlining what our policy priorities are, I feel like the amount of work that that would take would not really be worth the benefit that I think, not that we're not great, but that if our, if Sierra Madre's late name doesn't appear on a list, I don't know that that really sways one way or the other. So I'll just put that out there.
Please. Dan, good, thank you for that. Others?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I worry about um externalities. I mean, especially with assembly bills and senate bills, um, what are the unintended consequences of a decision made uh for, for an S B or an A B, right? Um, I think the city manager gave an example of what, something I was not considering because I'm, I am a huge proponent of um building bridges between our community regional partners for things that make sense. Um, and sometimes this is timely, but I think, uh, again, I think, uh, council member Creve said it well, a cost benefit analysis. There were a lot of, there are benefits to this, but I see a lot of potential um issues. Um, you know, I, I read the four policy um agenda, you know, the four, the four policies that the league is kind of going after, and maybe, maybe as a representative of the community, I don't, maybe the community doesn't believe in all those. Um, so I, I have a hard time getting on board with that for that, for this purpose. Um, so, again, I, I wanna give our city manager all the tools necessary to do his job and do it well, and um benefit Sierra Madre by, by building alliances with other cities, but on the other hand, I, I, I've, I feel that this has too many potential costs relative to that benefit. That's where I'm sitting.
With that, does that also, cuz it doesn't preclude us from supporting or making decisions if it really does help our other cities, like with wildlife and us trying to get policy or trying to get, create relationships with our neighboring cities. And it doesn't preclude us from making decisions, like if something does come up in the future with um wildlife or wildfire mitigation or anything like that, it doesn't preclude us from, as a council, having a voice and putting it forward. It just changes that modality of having these set advocacy priorities, which I don't necessarily agree with all of them necessarily. I don't disagree, but they wouldn't be my priorities for our city, and then necessarily putting that on, how often would that come up?
Yeah, putting the burden on the city manager to, to, to weigh through all the externalities, the, meaning the unintended consequences of, of a, of a bill, right?
Well, and so many are political, right? I mean, you, someone brought up housing. I mean, every housing bill has a straightforward policy, but then it has all of the political aspects to it as well. And I, 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 I know, I don't know that we're, we would always be in agreement, and I don't know that our city would always be in agreement as to whether that policy, um, that those political aspects are, are what we would support. And again, I, I, to your point, I would not wanna put the city manager in a position to have to like, not just weigh, like, what does the, what do the words say? But then what does this signal about what, you know, what political aspects of our city are, you know, uh, what political aspects is our city supporting or not supporting?
I, I agree with what I'm hearing. I do, I do feel like maybe we should be a little more open to emergency meetings called by the mayor and the city manager when we have an opportunity to have influence with other sister agencies.
Questions?
But I, I came in here with the same thought that this was probably a lot, not worth the, the effort.
So bringing that up, uh, city attorney or city clerk, what, um, would something like this warrant an emergency meeting? Can, I, I, aren't there, aren't there only certain, certain issues that we can call an emergency meeting for, or could we call an emergency meeting for this type of?
Or any type of meeting, you can just call a meeting, you just have to have.
Yeah, okay.
Notice it properly.
A s, a special meeting, yeah.
Right.
You could call a special meeting. It also depends on what the topic that the council will have to consider if, if it qualifies for an emergency meeting. Uh, I, I don't see many circumstances where it would be an emergency meeting. A special meeting definitely, if that's the council's pleasure, but, um, that's a twenty-four hour, that's a twenty-four hour noticing policy. Uh, I, I do recall that there have been instances where, uh, the city council was asked to make a decision or, or send voting delegates to the League of California Cities to vote on topics, and on occasion, those items aren't provided to the city council well in advance, and, and may make it a challenge for the city council to take a position.
And I would say that my experience is they're not even given to the voting delegate till like the day of the vote, which is unfortunate.
When you're there.
Yeah.
Not even the day of, there.
And, and, and I'll just mention that I, this council and the previous council has been very careful to avoid any political issues that we, that we realize may not benefit our city, just for the, just for the the, the national or state politics of it. Um, you know, we've been very careful, I, we have been very careful about that.
What I most appreciate about this body over the time that I've been here is, is the deliberative process. Is the discussion that goes on, is the, you know, we, I, I tell a lot of people, we, we always come out as, as a, uh, a we have since I've been on a five O council, but getting there um i- is, is never a straight road. It never i- is, you know, it, and, and maybe it's just I don't handicap it well. When I go into something, I'm, I'm not always sure where we end up. I mean, and I'll be, I'll be, I'll be frank, I came into this with thinking that, that it would be something, um, I would be more in support, and, and you all have convinced me that, that I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze in this. I, I think it, it, it does, the, the potential um ramifications, the potential complexity, the potential, you know, cost in time, I don't think is worth it. But I, but I, I will come back with one thing, cuz there's one nugget, I may wanna, one string I wanna pull out on this, and I, and I think that it is like letters of support to, to other cities in grants or initiatives that they've got. And, and what I'd like to throw out for discussion here, that seems to me to be something very different than weighing in on, on, on a bill or a regulation or an, you know, an ordinance somewhere else. This is like someone else is going for something a- and, you know, it, it, I think some people were saying, we're building bridges. I would be much more, I, 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 I would fully trust the city manager to, to, to speak on our behalf on that, to really show them that, yes, we're in this together, we want to support this initiative and, and this endeavor. So I'm seeing some general nods here.
I would, yeah, I would, I mean, I would entertain that because like to your point, that that's, that's likely not to be political, likely to not be, you know, some sort of zero sum where we're competing for, you know, where, where it's only gonna benefit our, our city if a neighboring city is, has success with something, it's not gonna, you know, be a detriment to us, and I definitely trust our city manager to know where our interests are aligned and, and act appropriately, right? Like there's certain things that, you know, aren't gonna make sense for us to support cuz it doesn't, it doesn't really have any relevance for us, but to the extent that our support would be helpful to your point, and then also to the extent that it's, you know, a relevant issue, I think that, that's exactly like where we could have something like this to streamline and not have to have a special meeting to say if we can sign on to a letter to support Arcadia's grant. And that might be an area that we, where our, our, our input, our input actually does have weight, right? Like it's, it's different to say that, you know, we're just one on a list of, 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 at the end of a bill, but, but Arcadia can say all of our neighbors, you know, or all of our significant neighbors are in support of this, like that could be actually more meaningful.
And, and, and in that type of um policy, we could have a hybrid where the mayor signs on as well, right? Um, discuss with the city manager, whoever our designee is, um, to, to sign that, that letter as well.
I, I mean, I, I, I think that there is that added weight to it if you can get the elected official to, to do that, so I, I would tend to agree with you, and then it is a um, it's a more focused and more narrow. So, so i- is there other discussion on this? I wanna make sure that we're, okay, so we, we, we do a so, so City Attorney Gargosian, do you have, so I think we need, that we need to bring this back as a resolution, is that right? Amend it?
Uh, yeah, yes, I, I think it's going, I think you've all kind of addressed the two issues um that I put before you. So the first is, it sounds like the council is leaning toward a hybrid approach where the uh city manager consults with the mayor and comes, comes to some agreement on what to support and what not to support. And as far as policy positions, I'll have to craft something I think that focuses on local issues. Um, and I'll, I'll think through with the city manager's help, what some of these, how, how to craft these policy positions so that it captures what this uh body wants us to focus on. So it sounds like you don't want us to focus on state-level issues or regional and local issues.
I almost wonder if it would be easier to craft if it was done not from the perspective of the nature of the issue to support, but by the asker. Like, you know, if, 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 if it's, that we're, cuz it sounded like what we were saying is that if it was one of our regional, you know, sister cities, you know, regional part, government partners, um, that would be, you know, less so on, on topic and more so on, um, on who the, who the, who the beneficial, beneficiary is.
And the impression that I'm getting, it, it is, it is really limited to cities, not a, a, any larger bodies, so it wouldn't be anything like the air district or um any other governmental body, uh, the county. It, it would be like helping a city saying they're going after something. Is, is, am I getting that right? Okay.
But I, I'm, I'm thinking of like, let's say the COG came forward with um a, a wildlife initiative that, that the city manager knows we would wholly agree with, right? Um, and so that would not be a city, that would be a, an association.
That's helpful.
Um, but it's not, you know.
It's not a state regulation that, that.
Yeah, I, I, it gets a little, kind of a fine line there, I think. Um, but I, I would want the ability, if that needed to be done fast, well, maybe we call a special meeting. I, I don't know, um, but.
So, good point though, I just thought of this. If we don't have the same council twenty-two months from now, and we don't have the bodies that we have, are we putting something into the city that could, where the, only the mayor and the city manager, and we don't know who the city manager might be ten years from now, are we creating something that maybe we, as a body, don't support later?
Well, that's why we, when it comes back to us, we have to be careful, well, not when you approve it, right?
Well, and we can always rescind, right?
Yeah.
No.
It might be something that we add to the normal, like, transition, you know, kind of, you know, we need to reassess this, I mean, you know, we, 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 we reassess, you know, assignments, we could also reassess, you know, do we wanna, do we want to, you know, either affirmatively re-up? Or do we want to rescind the legislative? That could be a fun discussion.
Yeah, right, that's what I was just saying. Mayor, we don't want this, so let's move on.
Last meeting in November, right?
Yeah, there you go. All right, do you have sufficient guidance to bring this back to us?
Uh, yes, I think so. Uh, yes, I think so, thank you.
Great.
I just wanted to thank, um, Councilmember Gos for asking the city manager, you know, whether, you know, this, because a lot of what we're talking about here is making his job easier, so I appreciate you bringing that perspective.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we are at the end of the agenda. Um, so we've, uh, at this point, uh, asking for, uh, future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I know we've talked about it a couple of times and we had the residents tonight mention it, but I do think, um, it would warrant a consideration to have some sort of post-mortem, um, town hall, you know, around, around the fire incident and, and our, our response. Um, I know CERT had a meeting last week that a number of our staff attended, I don't know if that model worked. Um, but, you know, just based on the, 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 um, feedback that we've gotten tonight and, and other areas, I think that would be a good opportunity for us to give a truncated version of the, of the presentations we had last week plus also then getting feedback from the, from the community. Um, just one random thing that I thought of during the incident that I thought we could include in that assessment is that a number of areas I saw on the various maps name their districts, or zones rather, versus numbering their zones. And it occurred to me that people might be more likely to remember what zone they're in if it was named versus numbered. I frankly, at this moment, can't even tell you what number zone I was in, so, um.
I can't either, I'm in your zone.
We're in the same zone, maybe our zone is just very forgettable. Um, it didn't get, it didn't get, you know, meditatively evacuated, so maybe that's why. Um, but anyway, so that, that, I saw that a number of places, including La Cañada close by, you know, have, have names. I just thought that would be something we could think of, if that, if we have control over that.
It'd be like a name calling contest.
Oh, that was my other thing, we could have a contest and have people name them and then maybe that people would then have, pay more attention. But I feel like people are probably paying attention now to their zone.
I, I would concur with that, especially because Bob Spears has specifically asked for this and he is our emergency planner and he specifically recommended this.
Very nice.
Great suggestion. Um, others for future agenda items? All right.
Move to adjourn.
Well, hold on one second, I have, I have a question before we do that. Can we just move to adjourn and?
You're, you're going to adjourn the regular meeting and you're going to open the special meeting for closed session?
I forgot about that.
Oh, you get to go.
Okay, so we've got a first and a second to, to close the, 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 the meeting. So, um, then I, and I think.
There was not a second.
I didn't see anybody seconding it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was seconding it.
Okay. Thank you, all right, so, 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 um, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, do I need to call for a motion to open? No, okay, so we, we will now adjourn into closed session, is that?
We have to ask for a public comment.
I would, I would thank you, I was about to go there, thank you both for that. Is there any public comment about us going into closed, closed session? Hearing none, we will adjourn into closed session.
And I would just say I'm similarly recused, so I will not be joining you.